Welcome to the work session for the village board, Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, May 22. First item on our agenda and participating via Zoom is continuing discussions about our 2023-2024 village capital project. Anthony Carr, our village engineer and superintendent public works. He is onboard via Zoom. Take it away.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Eric, Mayor and Board. So in the interest of time, I do want to get through all the updates. I will speak a little bit on the quicker side. I will not kill you with the technical details, but of course, if there's any questions or you want me to stop at any point, I have pictures, I have maps, I have illustrations, hopefully clarify a lot of things, but I just wanted to give Eric, the mayor and the board a quick update. We'll start with the easy stuff first and then we'll land, we'll meander to the end where there's some decisions for some other projects that need to be made and we're requesting your input. So the first item, all good stuff is the, I'll share my screen for each, each project update is the Foxwoods wall. So pleased to say that Peter J. Landy has completed approximately 78 feet of reconstruction of the, I should say, not the Foxwoods wall, it's the village's wall in front of the tennis courts, but it's located adjacent in between Carrie Court and Campus Drive, as everyone knows. But I just wanted to show a few pictures of what the finished product looked like, if you have not stopped out and seen it yourself.
It looks great. He really did a beautiful job.
There you go.
In a future cycle, we should, we should perhaps consider the section with the chain link in it.
Correct. So that wall is about 300 linear feet. We repaired about 78, not bad. I mean, even if we didn't, right? Even if we did it in two or three of the phases, I think that it's, it's, it's money well spent and it doesn't need to necessarily be done all at one time. It's not retaining any soil back. It's not structural. It's a freestanding wall. So anyway, glad to see it. I'm very happy with Peter J. Landy's work as I knew he would shine.
Can we put something on social media about the wall?
Yeah. Anthony, can you email me these pictures and we'll get them out on Facebook?
Yes, absolutely. Okay, the next item that I'll share too, I'm sharing my screen, multiple things here, just want to go over the pull this up. Okay. Okay, just a quick overview on this year's 2023 roadway pavement management program. So we will be paving seven road segments, all highlighted in red, including the Hopper Street Lot. So one parking lot and then the seven road segments all know really pretty much the Mandeville Bedford Road corridor with the exception of Cooley Street and, and Hopper Street and obviously the Hopper Street Lot. So that Sutton Place Academy, Orchard Street, Brookfield, Grove Street, Cooley Street, Hopper Street, Hopper Street Lot. Okay, what does this mean? How much is this? Well, just as a comparison, the total center line miles, which is basically a line, if you just drew it right down the middle of the road, it doesn't take into account how many lanes are on each side of the double yellow. It's literally just a straight line down the middle of the road. Last year, the village paved about 1.05 center line miles, which is good for a village this size especially. And this year, we're planning to pave about 1.08. So, and that includes the Hopper Street Lot. So we're definitely staying consistent. I think the village had a good paving program before. Obviously, we're looking to enhance it a little bit, but the roads that my predecessor had identified, pretty much I kept this year with the exception of just a few minor deletions and maybe a few additions. But in general, the pavement was well thought out. And if you look at this area, this is a contractor's dream because it's all in one area. So they mobilize here, then they go down to this other section and then they go home. So as far as schedule for the paving, we are in the process right now of having the village attorney sign all the contract documents. I believe Eric, you executed the agreement. ELQ Industries, the contractor, has executed the agreement. They're locked and loaded. They know that their contract is going to be between June 1st and the end of the year. They know not to touch this area, obviously, until after school's done. So likely what's going to happen, I requested a project schedule today. So when we have that, we'll share that. But what I anticipate they're going to do is come in probably right after the 4th of July holiday, maybe before, because members of school in Pleasantville Road, I know is, or Pleasant Bedford Road School is, is late June, right? So we want to make sure everybody's out. So to start June 1st, yeah, they could mobilize, bring some things onboard. Likely it'll be after the 4th of July, but to be honest with you, they'll come in, likely mill all these roads, fix whatever drainage, drainage structures and sanitary sewer structures. When I say fix it, we're replacing a lot of the metals, a lot of the covers that you see on the sanitary sewer manholes, which are typically in the middle of the street. A lot of those covers, we can't open. And I said to, to the staff, that's, that's no good. It's, it's not a good thing. So all the castings will be replaced. That's the metal. And then we can also replace some of the catch basin frames and grates so that the curb piece, the metal piece that's built into the curb, it isn't so high where little kids and animals and things could fall in there. So it'll be a little bit lower. And then, once they do that work, after they mill, so they'll mill, they'll fix the, the structure castings and then they'll pave. But really, there's probably only a week of milling and a week of paving and maybe a week of fixing those structures. They really could be in and out of here in a month in this area and likely even here. So I anticipate they're not going to do this area, go home, go to a different job, then come back for that little area. It wouldn't make sense for them and productivity would be hampered. So I figure this area will probably be done in June, excuse me, July. And then they'll, they'll meander down here probably later July, early August. But again, the focal point is just making sure this is all done before school. So we're excited. We got a lot of good feedback. We have a lot of good contractors who bid on this project, which is a very good sign. So that's the update you stand today. It sounds like the schedule.
Unrelated to our responsibilities, do you think there's any hope that DOT will get to Mandeville Road from Pleasantville Road to to Grand Street? It's really a mess there.
Yeah.
You know, they, they never share, they never share their paving schedule with us. Like I noticed at the local, local level, we put things online, we share maps, but with the state, it's almost like a, like a magic eight ball. You really don't know what, what's going on in there, but we could request an update and see where that segment of road is on their capital, their capital program to be paved.
It's, it's pretty bad, so.
Absolutely. Okay.
Anthony, could I, could I ask quickly? When, when we do these sort of repaving of roads that are close to the village center, do, do people ever bring up more speed humps or other traffic calming measures like we have on Roamer? Do those sort of things come up? And, and if so, I guess, what, what is the process for?
And if the civil war begins, who fights it on our side?
Yeah, well, I mean, I
You're bringing up a sore point.
Well, you know, a resident on Grove asked.
So here's, here's a piece of history that predates Anthony by a lot. When we had requests in a few neighborhoods, this was when Kevin was still here. We engaged a traffic engineer and came up with a, a, at least a general protocol for what would be the conditions that would require, that would rise to the level of doing this. Recognizing that when the one on Roamer and later the one on Sunnyside went in, you know, there were a whole bunch of people said, well, I want on my street, da, 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 da. And it's, it's not only a costly venture, but one that changes the dynamics of traffic and causes some neighbors to be
I, I agree, Mayor. So we recently had a request for a speed hump and I've shared this email that the, if you look up here and, and you kind of look at the, the bullets of kind of where I go over, the, the thing is with the speed humps, they, they don't, they don't, a lot of studies have shown that they, they slow emergency response down, they MP drainage, they're expensive. They don't work on slopes that is 6% or greater. Mid-block is ideal, but again, you're stopping and slowing traffic and people have a tendency to accelerate. They, they've seen delays for fire trucks, three to five seconds, ambulance delay, 10 seconds. And what happens is too, a lot of times with these, with these speed humps is that they divert traffic off one road and put it to the other. So when this was requested on Orchard Street, I said to the, to the resident, I said, well, what's, what's so unique about Orchard Street? Because you can make the same argument for Guyan Academy, especially in the school zone. So speed humps in general, there's mixed research on it from the FHWA and from Ashito, from the state DOT. They really don't recommend the, the speed humps in, in residential areas as well either. They're, they're meant to really kind of slow people down on, on a main corridor, but they, um, a lot of the complaints that have been attributed to that is that they impact bicyclists, motorcycles, private emergency vehicles, they tend to increase traffic volumes on adjacent streets. People tend to accelerate after the hump to get to the next traffic device. There's a couple of other things too, that obviously the emergency response has impacted cost, maintenance, drainage. And, and again, they don't really, they don't really tend to reduce speeds and, and they actually tend to sometimes increase motorists. So, you know, I'm not professionally, I'm not really a big fan of, of speed humps. There are a lot of other traffic calming devices that we've already are doing that we could certainly consider more of that, that are really, it's more of an antiquated kind of, it's, it's an antiquated tool. It's still a tool. I, I'm not going to say that it doesn't work at all, but there's better tools out there.
So the, the more modern or current traffic calming measures are often about sort of signaling visually to the driver in various ways, right? To slow down, which is part of what we're doing on Memorial Plaza. But we've shrunk the lane slightly and then there are these bump outs that kind of signal to the driver to, to slow down. That seems to be more the direction that things are going in, correct?
I, I, I don't disagree. And, and they say that the noise levels do increase by about 10 to 20 decibels when you, with these speed humps too, which is another complaint you may get, Eric and, and Mayor and Board, you may get that kind of complaint from the speed humps. And again, what makes any one road different from a speed hump, other than the request that it's coming from? It doesn't really, you know, it doesn't really benefits the few people on that block. But like I had said to the resident, I said, you know, is there really a speeding problem? I mean, Orchard Street's already a narrower road, which is already traffic calming in itself, you know. Really, I would defer to PD to set up enforcement because a lot of times people say, oh, you know, plows and cars, they're going fast, but really it's perspective. And almost every time I GPS my vehicles in Norwalk and had the speed, the snowplows, people said they were going 40, 45 miles an hour. They were going between 25 and 30. They, they really wasn't speeding.
I'm satisfied. I just wanted to raise the issue because I hadn't brought it up yet before and didn't know those answers.
Yeah, the pedestrian committee is also on top of that kind of stuff.
All right, go ahead, Anthony.
All right. Let me just share the sidewalk and curb map, but this also, but, but you're right, that there's a lot of things that you should plan for and should do while you're thinking of paving and, and then there's a lot of obviously things that go into it on, on the backside. You don't want to pave a road before you fix the utilities, before you fix your curb and sidewalks. So here's the sidewalk and curb map. Peter Landy is basically finished. If you could see this, is basically finished with his curb and sidewalk contract for this year. Academy, Orchard Street, Brookfield, Grove Street. We did replace a few panels on Martling and, and then obviously a few others on, on Brookfield as well. There was some additional outside of what myself and the foreman marked out. And then down here as well, for on Hopper Street, there was a lot of curbing that was damaged, especially if you come off marble and you look at the beginning section. And then in the Hopper Street Lot, there was a, a, a good amount of curb that was, that needed some repairs. So Peter Landy has finished all his work, including the Foxwoods Wall. His last stop was Memorial Plaza, which was about 425 linear feet of curb. So he's demobilized, he's out, he submitted one of his two payments already and we're going to be waiting for the final payment. So curb and sidewalk, again, we did this in advance of the paving work. It's worked in other places I've been. I've introduced, I said, look, if you're going to go down a road, you know, before you, you start paving roads that have no curb or the curb is severely damaged or the driveway opens, rather than having residents go and cut the road up afterwards and rather than having all the drainage issues, fix everything up front, fix everything that you're paving up to before. So now when we go down the roads to pave, it minimizes the potential for any, anybody having to cut into the road. And honestly, it's just the right thing to do. I mean, it's not, you don't want to pave up to a curb where there's no reveal or that's extruding out and it's settled and it's damaging tires. So we try to fix as much as we can based on the budget that we had. And that work has been completed and is now ready for the paving contract to come. Okay. So, and again, that was, we didn't do any work on Sutton Place because there was no curb and sidewalk. And then, then obviously here, the rest of the rest of the locations to match up with the paving schedule. Let me stop sharing that. Okay, I'm going kind of quick. Okay, next we could jump over to Clark Street Drainage Improvements. Let me pull this up real quick. I have a map. So that should help. Okay. So since the time we spoke, Eric, Mr. Mayor and trustee Ash with, we, my department has done some additional research, myself obviously delving into it a bit further. Fred Cook, camera and cleaning contractor, has had provided a report to us on this pipe segment basically from the, from the parking lot down to Bedford Road. Now, when they cambered the pipe or when they attempted to camera the pipe, they only got, you know, this whole run here is about 700 feet. They were only able to get up about 200 feet this way and 200 feet that way. So the, what I've learned is that you have an old pipe that varies in, in size. I think it's 12 inches here, diameter inside, and then an 8 inch diameter pipe here. And it's clay. Clay gets brittle, it cracks, it breaks over time, which absolutely is indicative as to why the contractor couldn't get up or the, the cleaning contractor couldn't get up and camera and get through there because you had collapsed sections of pipe, probably had a lot of debris in it, probably disjointed sections. Again, all common problems with old vitrified clay pipe, which is what you have from here to here. I believe you have concrete bigger pipe from here to here, slightly bigger. So what does this mean? After doing a, a further analysis and looking down, this is definitely something that the department and myself can, can design and bid in-house. But the question is, you know, what, what, what costs? So all in to install a new pipe underneath this, this, underneath the pavement in the parking lot and then to cross down and go south on Bedford, which would be within the sidewalk and be a very deep pipe, about 12 to 14 feet deep. And then add in maybe two mid-block catch basins because there's no drainage on Clark Street right now. So while you're doing this project, it is a very common practice to add drainage on streets that don't have it, especially when you're improving the main drainage infrastructure coming.
14 feet deep, wow.
Yeah, it, problem is, is that this pipe slopes down, right? Because we're going to go by gravity, no pumps eventually to the Bedford Road drainage system, right? But the problem is this parking lot slopes up. So you, and the pipe slopes down. And then again, you know, so you're, you're what they call bucking grade. The ground's going one way, the pipe's going the other way. So at this point right here, you're about 12 feet deep. You do start coming back up to about three or four feet deep here. But again, on average, I'd say average depth, eight feet. But at the worst, it's about 12 to 14 feet, which means the contractor has to put cheating and shoring. And it just becomes a little bit more of a, of an involved project, not impossible. Since we know the pipe is there now, we don't anticipate any future utility conflicts, right? And we know that there's no rock there if the pipe is there. So there's a lot of unknowns that are now known since you have an existing pipe there. So it, it, it takes away from the uncertainty during bidding and potentially getting higher numbers. But you figure for about 700 linear feet of pipe, which would include, you know, new drainage structure, manhole, manhole, maybe two catch basins here and then another manhole down here, you know, give or take several drainage structures, 700 feet of pipe. You're probably in the realm of $300,000 to $350,000 to complete those drainage improvements for construction cost. Engineering, we could do that in-house, which probably saves about, I don't know, if you went to a consultant, maybe they, they would charge about $20,000 to $30,000 to prepare bid documents. So there is a, there is a soft cost savings. Unfortunately, there's no escaping the hard cost of the construction.
So do you think, I guess it's, it's, it's clear that the drainage is working at some level because it, it works in a normal storm, but backs up in a big storm and takes a few days to proceed? Am I reading that right?
You're, you are 100, 100% correct.
So it's not completely stopped, but at some point, at some point it will be, right?
I will add that I met with the resident who lives at that point where it makes the turn. Their house is just south of that and they experienced flooding.
Next to the apartment.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me, um,
If you go back to the last image, I can show you.
Yes, yes, I'm going there right now.
So that house that's right below where it makes the turn or right next to where it's, yeah, right there.
Okay, so interesting question of whether the flooding that they get is related to this or not, right? The flooding on Soldiers doesn't come that far as a rule, does it?
My Mario, the Parks woman, the superintendent Mike, and also Mike Ferguson said, no. It, it pawns up because from being, from going out there too, you have two drainage ditches, swales, you'd want to call them, that discharge into a, a structure on each side. They basically go into a pipe on each side of the structure that Jeff, I believe, put in a few years ago. And then that is connected down. So this, this pipe, this junction, if you will, this structure up here ahead of here, it captures all the site drainage. Anything that goes overland and you have a few area drains on the site too, a little floor drains, grates. And basically everything's collected on this field, does enter this drainage structure and then go down. So the good news though, is that I don't think in a, an underdrain system in this field would, would be practical because from speaking to staff, there's a lot of rock. And they remember a lot of rock when they, when they move buildings in the back over here. Dan Merritt survey indicates a few areas where there's rock. So there'd be no purpose to putting, to blasting or hammering out, likely hammering out rock to put down underdrains to capture the water from the grass so that it gets dryer faster, if you will, and then connecting that underdrain system into here. So that, that side of the equation, that side of the house isn't needed for this project, which obviously helps reduce the cost. So you're not at that half a million dollar realm anymore. You're, you're closer to that 300 to 350, just installing new drainage from here down to Bedford Road.
Well, that's good. So the question is, you know, where do we put this in our capital budgets? I, I feel like we need to include it on the list, you know. To me, it's a priority, not, not necessarily a top priority relative to some of the other things, but definitely a priority. So that's the next conversation.
And this is
For sure, it needs to be done at some point. The question is how soon relative to the other things? Anthony, I mean, am I wrong that we don't generally have flooding on the, on the Clark Street side of the fields, that it takes a pretty serious rain?
Correct.
I think that we shouldn't fix it. I'm just saying, this isn't happening all the time, is it?
No, it, it, it's happening for the more intense storms and I, I don't know. I wasn't able to get out there and I'm going to confer with staff like over this weekend. That was, that was a lot of rain, right? So you'd expect that that area would be saturated at the very least and likely flooded to some degree. But from what I understand, it's only for the, the high intensity short duration or the long storms. It's not for the common smaller, more frequent storms. It, it's really for the heavier rains. And, and again, it's not really damaging. There's, I, I agree, it should be done. I mean, there's an issue, but it's not severely impacting or adversely impacting downstream properties. With the exception, I know that there was one owner here, because now that you said that trustee asked with, I know that Clark's department had said that there was one owner who said that they had groundwater seepage, you know, through the basement walls, but not actual flooding. There wasn't actual runoff coming into the house. But again, that could have been from a high groundwater table. That could have been from, from the area around here being saturated since this is a low spot. Correct. It's not, it's not impacting, there's not a cost benefit where you'd say, okay, 15 homes will be now removed or, or reduced flooding. Here's the cost benefit. There's really more just, you know, there's a problem. You know, where does it stack up in the deck to, for the priorities to fix it?
Okay, understood.
All right. Okay. Let me go on. The next thing, we'll go to Cooley Street. Let me pull this up here. Sorry. Street lights. So as everyone is, is likely aware, the 70 Memorial Plaza development is progressing. Part of the, part of the development's approval was the village's acceptance of some Cooley Street roadway improvement drawings. You know, and, and again, what that, what that looks like is, is, is starting to shape up. But the, where it stands now, the developer's engineering team was putting the final finishing touches on their site plans that they need to resubmit to the Westchester County Health Department because I had requested a change in the way they connect our water system. It, it's a better connection. And then they had to also, the water system on Mandeville Road from Cooley Street. And then they also had to get a New York State DOT approval again, because they changed things in the Mandeville Road way away. So they needed to re, resubmit their site plans or their, their roadway improvement drawings to the Westchester County Department of Health and to the New York State Department of Transportation. But also they need hour concurrents as well. So from what I understand, the development team has advised us. We had pinged the development team, I should say their engineering consultants. We didn't really hear much of a response. I believe their development team reached out to Hudson Engineering. That's the consulting engineer providing, preparing the drawings and the plans. And they said that we were supposed to have drawings this week to review. I obviously understand we need to expedite that review. We've been waiting for quite a while. But as far as Cooley Street's concerned, that sounds like the consultant is, is near completion. It sounds like they've worked with a lighting consultant to get the, the, the photometrics and, and the proposed lighting design finalized, which I'm going to share momentarily about which light we're, we're looking at. And then obviously, once that's finished, we'll receive a PDF of the finalized plans or the draft plans. Give our, give it the blessing to go to the state and the county. And then we don't know how long that, that process is going to take. That's, that's a wild card. Both agencies have seen the plans before. Actually, the state has not, the, the county has. So hopefully it's not taking months and it just takes a few weeks. I know that the developer had the original schedule of completing the Cooley Street construction, starting in June, starting next month. You know, when Eric and I spoke, I, I really saw that earliest potentially July, but likely August. I, I, I don't see them breaking ground and I wouldn't even be surprised if it goes into the fall. If they do break ground in September, they could certainly wrap up that road before the winter. It'd be aggressive, but they could certainly finish that work in, in two months to three months. Let me just scroll down. So there was a lighting standard that the village had worked on. I know Mayor, you had input on it, Eric, yourself, the building inspector. But there was a lighting standard I'm looking for right now. I know it's here. I just scrolled past it. The manufacturer is Spring City. And let me find it. Just give me one second. Can't find it here. You know what I'll do? Let me just go to one of the location that I have. And I'll show you a detail of what the light will look like, look like. And then I could also pull a picture while you're looking at, at that detail.
Just that way I text Mike and Mario, Soldier and Sandler's been on this weekend.
Okay, that's good.
That is good. That is very good then. So Mayor and Board, this is, this is, and Eric, I know you've seen this, but this is the, the luminaire, which is the, basically the fixture and then the lamp post that we had worked over, looking at a few different options, something a bit more modern, something that will give Cooley Street a bit of pop. You know, the first iteration, when I first started, the lighting wasn't even considered in, in, in the street in the roadway design, right? And we all know that part of roadway design, curb, pavement, sidewalks, guide rail, right, if applicable, and you need lighting. And, and it's, and you should have good lighting and it depends on, on what you're looking for. I know the village is in the process of trying to finalize a lighting standard or at least, you know, consider a few, right? Versus the Cobra Head Streetlights, we use the, you know, Cobra Head LEDs are nice too, but there's this, we have the Sternberg, which is, which is the decorative streetlight that you see along Mandeville Road. But you know, there's a few other lighting options I see throughout the village. But this was the, Mayor, and this is, I know Eric, based on your input, the building inspector, this was kind of where we landed. It's a, Spring City is the manufacturer, the style's an Alton LED, it's dark sky compliant, so it reduces light pollution. 40 watt LED, again, it's not going to be super bright. You could actually adjust the intensity, kind of make it a little bit brighter, a little bit lower, but more importantly, the Kelvin temperature, right? So that's 2,700 Kelvin is pretty much almost like that yellowish look. The lower the Kelvin number, 2,700, 3,000, looks like a yellow light bulb. As you get to more than 4,000 and you get into cooler temperatures, which is the higher temperatures, you get more to natural daylight. And then when you get really cold, it's almost like that bluish kind of halogen look. And that's like, that, that's more than 5,000 Kelvin. So if you're in the 2,700 to 3,200, 3,500 K Kelvin family, you, you're going to see that kind of yellowish. The, the old streetlights, the high pressure sodium, they used to call them, but you'll see kind of that, that more, that warmer thing. Some people like it, some people don't, but this is the, this is the standard. This is what we're working with the developer to work with the lighting consultant who's going to tell us, okay, based on a 14 foot street, um, street light height, how many do you need? Based on my experience, they likely would probably need eight to 10 lights. Each light is $3,600 a piece. So if you do the math, if you need 10 lights, obviously we would stock 12, right? Just in case they get damaged or they need to be replaced. So all in cost, you're looking at probably about, you know, 40 to $45,000 for the 10 to 12 lights, depending on, you know, 10 times 3,600 is $36,000. But if you do 12 lights, obviously it's about $42,000. We don't know how many lights yet. That's what that final Cooley Street drawing will show us. I will have an opportunity to review it one more time, even though myself and the building inspector have met with Hudson Engineering twice over the last two months to go over two months to go over comments and to go over these plans. Uh, there was a bit of a quiet period. Again, that's internal to the development team, um, so I'm not here to, to necessarily figure out why they were quiet. That's between them, but, uh, we've had the prior village administrator has also been, um, communicating with them and communicating to us. Um, Eric, I know you've reached out to Patty, um, myself and, and Rob Hughes have reached out to the engineering consultant, but there, there's a line where you don't want to bother them and you have to let their, their, their professionals do their thing. So, in any case, uh, we were advised that we'll have the revised drawings this week. Um, obviously I'll turn that around very quickly because we want to get that into the, the county department of health and the New York State Department of Transportation. Uh, but again, big picture, probably not starting that Cooley Street roadway work. August, I, I still think it's gonna be August and, and maybe even September.
So I mean, do you think that, at some point, if it can't get done before the snow flies, it has to wait till the spring? Do you think we're at risk of that?
Uh, it, I, I think that once the uh, once the regulatory agencies, uh, once we know where we stand with the regulatory agencies, if, if they can mobilize, I mean, it's a private job, right? So they're able to do things and move quicker and, 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 and get people on board, whereas in municipalities, it takes a while for the agreements. We have more of a procurement process. I mean, if they started, it, it's May twenty second. If they started July first, you know, even, even let's say mid-July, realistically, they got their approvals and they went right to work, mobilized, then they were able to start, between July fifteenth and August first. Yeah, three months, I would say they could be finished, which puts you into what? August, so September, October, November. Yeah, you'd be putting pavement down, just uh, just before the, 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 the winter arrives and hopefully it's not a cold winter.
So, I mean, they presumably have an incentive to get this done since it's the access to their parking garage as well on that side, right?
Yeah, correct, correct. And they need us to sign off. There'll be a title block, for public works and the village engineer to sign off. We have to accept these plans, right? Because that, that's part of the deal and the site plan approval is that they need to submit, the village, they need to prepa- provide and the village needs to accept, well, the village, you Mayor and your board, and obviously recommendation from Eric and myself to accept the drawings and say, okay, yes, we're, we're good with this. And they, we're waiting for that, that drawing set.
Okay.
All right. Um, so that's the light. I will circulate a cut sheet afterwards. If you want to see a picture, I can Google one real quick to see what it looks like, but it is, it is a nice light. Uh, these, these poles will have a GFI, um, receptacle for, for ornaments or any other things that we choose to. It's always good to have that, out of the manufacturer rather than try to retrofit it later. Um, and they are lock, lockable and tamper proof. Uh, again, I'll circulate pictures just so everybody can see it. A color picture might help. And the finishes, just so you know, will be matte, kind of a matte black. So the post will be black and, and anywhere that, says bronze, it's really gonna be black around, around the fixture. So it's a nice looking light. But in any case, I will circulate the cut sheet and uh, we can have a further discussion if needed on it. All right, moving along, we're almost, we're almost there. Last, okay, traffic signal optimization, just wanted to, to bring this up to everybody here. Okay, this will be a, less than a five minute update, then we'll move to Pleasant Village Estates sidewalk. So the, the uh, traffic engineering consultant that we retained for the traffic signal optimization at our, three village owned signals, um, has put out, what's called basically a automatic traffic recorder. It's a box with wires that'll show you momentarily, that takes into account all the traffic volumes in each direction, right? So they placed them, they placed this box with the wires across the road, up on Bedford Road, right before Tompkins, so on, on the northbound approach. And then also pretty much past the seven eleven, uh, they put another, um, automatic traffic recorder. So again, it, it records volumes, vehicle weights, et cetera, et cetera. What they've also done, and this is a sub consultant to the engineering consultant, a company who specializes just in traffic data. They installed three inconspicuous cameras that don't pick up any personal information. But what the cameras do is they pick up pedestrian volumes, right? Because the traffic counts, these loops, these wires across the road are not gonna pick up pedestrians, even if you stand on it. So they have cameras here that actually calibrate and validate, what the, you know, the traffic counts here, because every now and then you might get a, a larger truck, and that counts it as two cars. There's a little bit of, of sometimes an discrepancy that the cameras, uh, are used to, to calibrate the information that you're getting, because the better information we get, garbage in, garbage out, but information we get will go into the model to simulate existing conditions. Obviously, they're also doing field, uh, measurements and field evaluations to make sure that whatever we do put into the model, and once they actually build the model, which has not been done yet, this is the data collection phase. Uh, once they actually calibrate the model, and then they're gonna go back out in the field and say, okay, well, does real avenue really back up this way? And, and, and they'll, they'll fix all those adjustments at, at the end. But just wanted the board to be aware, Eric, I know you know, and the PD and everybody who needs to know, knows. Uh, but we have the automatic traffic recorder here and here. Um, they're, they're recording about a week, week and a half of data continuously. These cameras are only placed out twice, once on the weekday and once on the weekend. So these cameras are not there twenty four seven. And again, it's just to validate a weekday and a weekend, because obviously, as you know, different times on each, um, dictate different traffic patterns. So just wanted to give you a little bit of a heads up on that and also show you, what these look like in case you come across. The, uh, let me show my screen. These are the automatic traffic recorders. So there's the wire, seven elevens over here, there is the box. So they'll be placed on the floor, they're not mounted to the pole, they shouldn't be. Uh, and obviously our streetsweepers need to be careful of this, which is another reason why we, we need to coordinate diligently with the consulting. So there's that. And then there's the other one by Tompkins, right here, on Bedford Road. So that's, we're moving right along, we're staying on schedule and hopefully, uh, Mayor, Board, Eric, will be able to present, uh, findings and recommendations, hopefully at one of the August, uh, board of trustees meetings. And before then, we'll have some draft work sessions, we'll have stakeholders involved, but right now we're still in the data collection phase. All right. Last, last but certainly, certainly not least, let me pull up the map and, and this is something that I know myself and Rob Hughes and, and Eric as well, um, looking for direction on the Pleasant Village Estates. Let me switch to different maps so everybody could see it much easier. Like twenty screens up. Okay. So Pleasant Village Estates, I know there's a lot of history here and there's a lot of things to, to go over, so I'll try to convince this and, and, and give, at least my perspective on it from what I've had to learn for the last nine months about this project. So, this was an old subdivision, as we know, circa twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. Uh, been there obviously for almost a decade as part of that project. The developer was responsible for constructing about a four hundred and fifty foot sidewalk from pretty much, at the intersection of South Greeley and one seventeen up to pretty much almost where, currently twenty three Bedford Road, single family house is under construction. So basically the length, fronting their property, but not all the way to the Springfield Court driveway. So maybe two thirds of their frontage was supposed to get a sidewalk.
Are you, that's where's the village line there? It's right,
Yeah.
Right there, right?
Yes. Up, I don't have the municipal, uh, tax parcel. Village line is not far from here at all.
I think it might even, you might have to go into Newcastle to get into Springfield Court. I'm not sure.
Yes, I know. It's very, very close. So the, the, the long and the short of it is, the developer was required to build the sidewalk from here to almost where the tree line ends. Also, in addition to the sidewalk, there was drainage improvements, uh, concrete curb installation, but more importantly, a guide rail. Now, from what I understand, the drainage improvements have been completed, uh, because that shows up on the current survey, survey. But what has not been completed is the sidewalk. Um, and the state, I just want to give you a little bit of history here because I found this and I thought it was definitely worth, uh, definitely worth reviewing because it might help, make a, a more informed, uh, decision. Okay, so, October twenty eighth, twenty thirteen, from the New York State DOT. This letter was accidentally sent and we don't know why to the building inspector in the town of Mount Pleasant, who forwarded it to our building inspector and also my predecessor. Uh, Mr. Peter Forchetti is the developer of Pleasant Village Estates. So, basically, and, and you can read along as I kind of give you the Cliff Notes, the state, required the developer to do X, Y, and Z, which is noted on, on, on items one, two, and three, right? Drainage, curb and sidewalk and guide rail. Those are the, those are the highlights. Drainage, I believe, has been done and I will verify, because that has showed up on our, on Dan Merritt's survey, but I'll, I'll, I'll verify that. But I believe the drainage has been completed as part of the Pleasant Village Estates project. The curb and sidewalk and the guide rail have not. So what the state requires is anytime there's, there's a new development, um, proposed along the state highway. It's, and it says, as required by state law, I don't know the state statute, I could look into that and the consulting village attorney can too. They basically say, look, you gotta put a new curb and sidewalk in. They don't care if it, if, if it's an infill, if it, if it's a sidewalk to nowhere, but, they want a sidewalk. And again, in the state's mind, they want the municipality to kind of do the work and then eventually they'll connect it or not connect it, but they want the sidewalk. They also, more importantly, want a guide rail. Now, I know my predecessor, kind of went back and forth about the DOT, whether the guide rail should be right behind the curb, but the state wanted it right behind the sidewalk. And there was reasons for that. And I, I, I do agree with the state, but I also understand, why Jeff wanted it instinctively in front of the sidewalk. The state doesn't want the guy rail from the sidewalk because a car could, they call it ramping. It could hit the curb and almost project over the, the guide rail. And they also, the thought is, if the, if the car hits the guy rail hard enough, it could, um, it could fling the post that is in the ground up and could actually become, cause more harm to, to, to someone walking on the other side of the guide rail. So that's the logic. Obviously, there's a lot more engineering that goes into it, but the state said, no, we want the guide rail behind the sidewalk and that's the only way we're gonna approve it. So, and that's exactly what Andrew really is, the permanent engineer said to myself and Rob Hughes, who met with her a few months ago, who was happy to hear that we're revisiting this and happy to hear that, I said, look, we'll put the guide rail wherever you like. As long as we can get the approval expedited, we will certainly do whatever the state wants, because it makes no sense dumb wrestling with the state. You're not gonna win. Uh, most, right? More times often than not, you're not gonna win the dumb wrestling match. So, this is the letter that I found. I could circulate this, Eric. I don't know if you have it. I'll send it to you, but, uh, what happened was the story, at least I've passed down to myself, is that the, the developer, um, the, the state gave back, for whatever reason, the state gave back, the developer's bond or, or, or gave, basically issued the permit and closed out the permit, without ever requiring them to do the sidewalk. And it was a snap through, I think, on the state's part. This is what's been passed down to me. So the state, called Rob Hughes and obviously sent this letter and said, hey, could you help us? Can you hold up any kind of building permits until this is resolved and can you get, can you get on them? You know, we're not coming after you, but can you give us some help to, to try to, try, try to get this done? And, and Rob Hughes correctly said, well, I can't hold anything up. This is, this is not, you know, we're kind of out of it now at this point. You shouldn't have given away, you shouldn't have closed out the permit and give the bond back. You should, you know, so whatever happened on the state's end happened, which is why they're not, really coming after us. They understand that there was an oversight on their side. However, um, the developer subsequently, and Eric, I know you have the history on this too, did give us a seventy five thousand dollar check to complete the drain, um, sidewalk, curb, and guide rail improvements. So, moving forward, without looking at twenty three and, uh, and twenty five Bedford Road, which is the corner property next to Pierce and also the property next to it with the single family house. In today's dollars, to build this section of sidewalk, four hundred and fifty feet, let's call it, with the guide rail, all in, you're probably at about, a hundred and fifty to, 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 to maybe two hundred thousand dollars. To build that. And, and again, the cost is the guide rail, right? Four hundred and fifty linear feet of guide rail and about a hundred dollars linear foot, that's fifty thousand dollars. To put the sidewalk in, based on, I use Peter Landy's prices currently, that's another fifty thousand dollars, right? And then you have curb, that has to go along here, because I don't think there's any there. That's another twenty five thousand dollars. Then you have maintenance and protection of traffic. So it really is a, one fifty to a hundred and maybe seventy five thousand dollar project, if you did just this segment that the state, kind of is requiring us to do, but approaching it in a passive manner. So that's that segment. If you continue.
The guard, the guard rail is to keep cars that might cross the sidewalk from going down the hillside?
Yes, that is, and let me just show you the.
So why wouldn't that just, just be at the very beginning on the curb? Wouldn't that just be a fifty to a hundred feet of guard rail?
Uh, they want it the entire, they want it the entire length.
Uh, that's great. I mean, that, that doesn't, that doesn't fit with their own logic of wanting it because of the outside of a curb.
Well, they're saying, let me go back to the, uh, to, to, to the map real quick. Okay. But they're saying if a car, you know, you are going around a horizontal curve here, ended intersection, right? They're, but they're saying that there's an embankment here. So it, 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 there's a slope here. So that's why.
Significant drop.
Right, that's why they want the guide rail on the inside to protect cars.
Car in either direction crossed, or ended up on the sidewalk. The idea of the guard rail is it wouldn't go down the hill.
Right, and potentially into someone's home or somebody walking down there or, or into their driveway.
Way to go, but.
Correct. So let me just show you these plans here.
Uh, Anthony, if I've listened to you correctly, can I impute that? For the sidewalk only, you're talking about a hundred dollars a foot?
For the sidewalk.
No, no, not the guard rail, sidewalk.
Twenty, twenty two dollars a square foot for the sidewalk. And that includes the concrete, the stone below it, the grading, that's, all in that twenty two dollars a square foot. So if you do four hundred and fifty feet times a five foot, um, wide sidewalk times twenty two square feet, you get about fifty thousand dollars.
Well, yeah, but I'm saying like, if you don't, the, the sidewalk has to be the width it has to be, right?
Correct, yes.
Per linear put on the sidewalk, it's about a hundred dollars. Is that right?
Yeah, I mean, if, if, yeah, if you break it down, right, well, if you, uh, yeah, that, that's exactly what it works out to.
Okay, thanks.
But we've got no choice. We, we have to play ball with the OT and they demand a guard rail. We have to do this at about half, half the money is, paid previously, right?
Have about half the money, um, just so you see that this plan was, was approved back in May fourteenth, twenty twelve, and we have engaged this, this engineer, uh, who actually gave us the proposal for twenty three thousand dollars to, re-update the plans, revise the plans to today's standards, because it has been, it has been eleven years, and also to perform a daily, inspection, which the state would require, especially for a guide rail and sidewalk job. So that's just something that unfortunately, even if I could do the plans in-house, they, 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 they want full time or at least half day inspections every day. Um, so, just, just another layer in addition to the construction costs.
So we, on this piece of it, we've got no choice, right? We gotta do it.
I don't disagree.
Michael has a question.
I just don't understand why we have to do more than the curb, at our own expense, because we don't have guardrails all along every road that are straight. That's not a, that's not a practice.
It, it's not about the curve of the road. It's about the drop off from the sidewalk down to Springfield Court.
Yes.
I thought the devil said, because of the outside curve, but I, I'm just, I'm thinking about driving on Bedford Road and there are not guardrails the whole, you know.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. The, the, the letter did say, let me pull it up. If you look at item number three, construct guide rail along the property frontage, as this property drops off abruptly, and is on the outside of the state highway curve.
Right, so I interpreted, I interpreted that as to be binding, like that those two things together are what necessitated the guard rail.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yes, yes. No, but they, they're saying though, there's a curve there and, and there's a horizontal curve and motorists tend to, tend to speed there. And, and that's.
We're saying the same thing.
Right, so go back, go back to the plan. Not exactly right away. Go back to the plan if you would.
If you're coming down Bedford Road, you know, you turn left and there's, there could be a rail or a, a yellow.
Or the Google aerial, whatever.
Is that whole area within the village boundary?
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying it sounds like a six-figure decision we're making right now and I don't see why we have to have a, rail the whole length of a street, a straight road.
They kind of sent seventy five thousand dollars trapped already, right? Well, well, now long gone developer did. I mean, the issue, the issue they are presenting is that somebody going in either direction, could lose control and end up on the Springfield Court side, right? And if they cross the sidewalk, and didn't have something to slow or stop them, they would go down this hill, which is a fairly steep hill.
See, I get that, all that, but okay. I don't see why we have to do the rail all the way down here.
But, but that's steep.
It's the hill.
But yeah, it's, it's, it's steep the whole length of the sidewalk. So you see the contours here? You have a elevation, let's just say four eleven down here. You have four twenty four up here. You have a, you have a, a twelve foot drop, over X amount of feet. And if you see all the lines, the closer the lines means the steeper the photography, right?
Total agreement on the spot of the intersection.
People don't just drive off the road at corners or at curves.
But this is, four hundred and fifty feet.
Right, and all of it has a drop.
Why don't we?
I, I mean, I don't doubt that DOT would require guardrails in lots of places. We don't have them if they have it. They totally would ask for it.
It's like, we, we ramp other things, but then if you go in and you construct again, it has to come off the coast, right?
Right, right, right.
I'm just trying to be fair. There's a lot of people who live in here running with cars on them and drop offs. We're not putting guardrails on every.
You don't practically do it, but if they went in and they did something else to the property, then they would have to, right?
Yes, and, and, and look, the difference here is that you're on a state highway. You're, 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 you're developed on, on a state highway, which in accordance with their state law, requires you to put a sidewalk, but they've, the permanent engineer, and believe me, I have long correspondences between my predecessor and the permanent engineer and, and, there, there's no, there's no medium. Either, either the project goes guide rail or it's, there's no, there's no approval. And that's not me. That's not, that's not coming from me. So.
Right, we're not gonna win this argument.
Right.
Although I understand your point.
The village tried for the last few years and it was, it was basically like two, two rams locking horns and, and, and no one budged. And then you have no guide rail and no sidewalk and no project. But just to, um, just to give a little bit more context also too, for this plan, I want, I wanted you to see this. This is, this kind of gives a little bit more of a, of, of context here. Let me find. Okay, here we go. So the other part to this is, there currently is a single family. There currently is a single family house being constructed. Well, this lot, the Skolnick lot at the corner of Pierce Drive and Bedford Road was subdivided into two lots. So. This line here. Is the new property line. It's a very narrow lot, but there's a new new single family house going here. We already have, not yet, we don't have it, but the owner gave us authorization to file an easement with the county. Which actually got returned from the county because they wanted additional information on our meets and bounds description, basically detailing. I think we're requesting an eight foot wide easement for this for our future sidewalk. That that that's a done deal. The Graziano property, we're going to get the easement with that. We actually filed with the county. We got a kickback. And now we're revising or resubmitting. So that that's it. That's a hundred percent. Mister Skolnick on this corner, myself and the building inspector went out in the field to meet with him. Mayor, I know you and Eric and and Rob also met with him. Um, I was absent for that meeting, but I know that he expressed, at least in the field visit, that he would entertain. An easement because if you look at this property line here. This is a very quirky setup, but the villages right away. Which is shown with this line here. Jogs in. Through his retaining wall, which is shown with those little circles. So here's the. Edge of the road here.
This is. And that's a stone retaining wall that I think is nineteenth century in origin.
Yes, yes, yes. The 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 villages right away. It 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 widens as you get to Pierce Drive, but then it does this sharp hook where it comes in almost to the edge of the road. And that's why we needed those easements in front of the Graziano property twenty three Bedford and why we need a piece of Mister Skolnick's easement, which again is eight foot wide. Again, he's a wild card. Um, I don't know if he'll say yes or no. That's for him to determine. He obviously knows the village wants to do something, so he's in a position of leverage, but I wanted to give the. The mayor and and board just a quick overview. If we. Let's say showed. This sidewalk segment on this on the plan that gets submitted to the DOT from the consultant, this one and this one, that's an extra. Probably about an extra four hundred feet of sidewalk. That now increases your cost from about a hundred and fifty to one seventy five to about probably two twenty five to two fifty because.
And Anthony, would we need a guardrail at any point along there? Is there a drop?
No, no drop, no guide rail. Uh, and the state looked at it. The state's been out numerous times with myself and and Rob Hughes. To look at site distance and how much they were going to clear back as part of their site plan approval, which trees they're going to remove. But the reason why this is a little tricky in front of Mister Skolnick's property is because you have that retaining wall, which I know I've had discussions with trustee Asquith, mayor and and a few of you as well. And Eric about, you know, these with these sidewalks where you have steep slopes, where you have to cut into the slope, build a wall. That's exactly what you're going to have to do here. And again, that adds a little bit of cost to the project. Is it a long length? No, maybe half the distance. Uh, of the Foxwood Wall, but it still lends itself to some cost. So all in. If you looked at it globally, I'd say probably about two twenty five to two fifty to do everything from Pierce Drive up to South Greeley. If you looked at just what you had to do per the state because they have some leverage there, uh, if you looked at that, that's about a hundred and fifty thousand, give it give or take how hungry the bidders are, what the numbers come back at. Uh, et cetera, et cetera. But this.
The painful, the painful piece of that is that. It would create a sidewalk without a connection to the sidewalk that exists on the other side of Pierce.
Right.
And you then would have incented the. Pedestrian to walk on that side of the street and then make this. Uh, hazardous navigation past that stone retaining wall to get to Pierce where there's a sidewalk.
Correct. Correct.
It's almost better now that we haven't said, please, yeah, haven't encouraged you to walk on the Springfield Court side. As soon as we are encouraging you to do that. We gotta work pretty hard to make the connection, I would say. Anyone see a difference?
Do we? And do we have to pay for that or is the the person who's adding the extra house paying for that?
Well, we have not finalized discussions at this moment, but the developer or the builder for twenty three Bedford Road, Mister Graziano. Is not opposed to contributing and uh some monetary. Uh, cost to the construction of the sidewalk along his frontage. Um, do I think Mister Stone is going to contribute? Probably not, but Mister Gra, because he's not developing anything. So in fairness to him. It it but but yes, there is an op, there's a potential opportunity. Uh, for the village to recoup some of this cost from Mister Graziano that looks more favorable than not.
No, and he's building a house in a driveway and all of that. There's a lot of work going on. At Skolnick piece, there isn't any work going on, albeit. The Graziano piece is a subdivided piece that's calling subdivided and sold.
And that's the easier player too, that there's no moving retaining walls, slope. That's that's a straight hundred foot shot that. So here's the question. Do we want the consultant when um, you know, Ralph Master Monaco, who's engaged, I just he just has to refresh his proposal, which I'll. Let me just, this is the last item and then we're I think and then we're uh we're square.
Yeah, because we're gonna have to jump to our regular meetings.
Yes, yes. So so this this is Ralph Master Monaco's proposal that. Is dated December twentieth. I'll ask him to update the date, obviously refresh it, take another look, but this is for the scope of services that brings you from design. All the way to um, construction oversight and final as built. And if you add up all these numbers, twelve, five. Plus eight eight hundred plus potential as built, you got about twenty three thousand dollars. So again. You know, relative to the whole cost of the project, the percentages are in line. It's definitely a reasonable price. Um, he was the engineer before. He knows state work. Uh, Dan Merritt is already updating the survey to make sure that everything is what's out there now matches what, because Dan has the survey for Pleasant Village Estates. He has a survey for twenty three Bedford and has a portion of Skolnick's property. So the consultant will have the survey and will be able to begin.
And and as Master Monaco's proposal include the notion of. Coming past Graziano and Skolnick or not? Is this just for the Springfield Court piece?
He would. He would include it because honestly, the drafting and that's the direction I wanted to get from from Eric and from yourself, mayor and board. Is, you know, one, one thing you can do is is have the consultant design the full project, maybe called the Pleasant Village Project Phase One. And and then Graziano Phase Two and 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 Skolnick Phase Three or Skolnick and Graziano could be Phase Two. At least so the DOT knows, okay, we're definitely doing the Pleasant Village sidewalk, but based on funding availability. We might have to push off twenty three and twenty five Bedford roadside walk. I mean, it doesn't make any sense to stop. At least, you know, from doing this in the past, to stop at Pleasant Village Estates. Get that approval and then only come back less than a year later, submit another highway work permit application.
Regardless of when we build it, we ought to have it all stapled in the corner. Is my view, right?
Mm hmm. So. So if we do those two pieces, that gets us to Pierce Drive. And then there's a sidewalk down.
Already a sidewalk along Bedford starting at Pierce.
Oh, there is. Okay.
Yeah, there's not a sidewalk on Pierce itself. It's on Bedford.
Right, you could continue to the village and you have a unbroken path of sidewalk all the way.
Yes.
There you go. It starts right. Kind of here.
But that curve at Skolnick is tight. Yes, you don't want people walking.
No, that's 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 bad. That's a rough one. You could see and this is, you know, you could see the geometry.
Way better on the other side.
Yeah. Uh, uh, yeah, I've walked it many times and lived the total.
You ever seen orange tree? That's me running here over.
So mayor board is the consensus that we're okay authorizing the consultant to 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 provide the plans for basically South Greeley all the way to Pierce, but indicating. That this area here would likely be a, we'll call it phase two, and this this area is phase one.
Yeah, that's my view, and it could be depending on how this. Plays out and the Skolnick's. Easement and all of that. Maybe we do it, maybe we don't, but it's hard to imagine that we shouldn't get it all stapled in the corner and DOT signing off, right?
Correct. I mean, you definitely have Graziano. You definitely have that easement pretty much, pending pending some clerical um revisions.
But once we have Springfield Court and Graziano, now we're really. Creating an incentive for people to walk on that side.
Right. Which means we have to work with Mister Skolnick. Correct.
Right. It's just a tough spot there.
Yeah.
So the status there, I know I know you have to run, but the status there that myself and Rob Hughes have engaged uh Dan Merritt. Dan Merritt is currently preparing. Uh, meets and bounds and basically a an easement description for a revised easement description for Graziano. And also an original, a a new easement description for Mister Skolnick for him to review. Uh, Graziano is going to take a second look at what we have. We prepare. We refile this with the county. We should get approval in a few weeks and then this is in Mister Skolnick's court to negotiate or say no.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you, Anthony. Much appreciated.
It's all right. We try to keep it, try to keep it as quickly as possible, but thank you, Eric. Thank you very much.
There's a lot to talk about. As as always, we appreciate the hard work.
Yes, absolutely. Take care of yourselves. Eric, have a good night. Mayor and board, have a good night.
All right, so we're gonna have to come back to the A one setup business issue, moratorium issues. We'll go back to work session after our regular session. We have an executive session after that, but. Uh, does that sound right?
Yes.
Gotta move into our regular meeting. All right. Everybody ready?
Indeed.
All right. Uh, good evening and welcome to the village board meeting for the village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, May twenty two. We have just uh finished an hour long work session. Uh, with Anthony Carr, our village engineer and superintendent probably works, working over a bunch of issues. Uh, and have now gone into our regular meeting. Uh, as always, you can uh watch our meetings. Uh, via Zoom uh and pick up a Zoom link at Pleasantville dash NY dot gov. But within a a few days, the recorded version of the meeting, including the work session, will be available at PCTV seventy six dot org. Uh, our uh next regular meeting is. The second Monday of June, which is Monday, June twelfth. Work session at seven, regular session at eight. Had a few announcements uh to make. The first is a shout out to all of you who participated in what was. Uh, a wet, but nonetheless enthusiastic, pleasurable day. Uh, certainly not the weather report any of us were hoping for for pleasurable day, uh, but uh. Despite the uh misty weather that turned into a bit of a downpour, uh, we had a whole lot of people attend and and a whole lot of people, I think. Uh, seemed to have a good time. So I just want to a shout out to uh. Um, Mike Newman, uh, our superintendent of parks and recreation, Mario Sincero, the foreman, the whole crew. Uh, who uh soldiered through and a big shout out to all the vendors and committee groups who participated. Um, we had uh rides and and uh. Magicians and. Clowns on stilts, uh, just as we hope to have on a beautiful sunny day, uh, and instead they were tromping around in a bit of a wet condition. Uh, but all things considered, a pretty big success, I think, uh, for a rainy day. Uh, shout out to everybody who participated in the community scholarship fund five K run. Uh, Appalachian Service Project had a fundraiser pancake breakfast at the Presbyterian Presbyterian Church and. Pleasantville High School Art Department, which normally has a art show downtown at. Uh, the Jacob Burns Media Lab or upstairs. Is at the uh theater, uh, couldn't have those spaces because of schedule conflicts that particular day, and so they. Uh, pivoted to the gallery space on the second floor at the Presbyterian Church, uh, which was a nice connection with the ASP. Pancake breakfast, really great work. Shout out to everybody. Uh, felt badly that it uh didn't go on as long as we hoped it would, but. A lot of good stuff is packed in in a few short hours. And uh, a lot of people went home with, so. Um. I saw Paul at the Chamber of Commerce uh table. Nicole was at climate uh. Uh, with the carbon uh carbon quiz.
Yes, with the doom and gloom place. We were the doom and gloom.
Yeah, the kids, the kids turned the the bounty castle into a slip and slide.
Did they?
Cause there was like puddles of water in there.
Yeah, wow, yeah. And I will say, you know, on a beautiful, warm, sunny day, the. The uh dunking booth where you throw the ball and try to cause uh cause this uh. A person to be dropped into a pool of water. Kind of what you're gonna make, right? Even I might have agreed to that.
They still did it.
They still did it.
Still did it. They still raised a lot of money.
And the high face thing, you know, with the. Wood cream in your face, like, who cares? It's gonna be. Gonna be awesome. So if there's anything to be found, uh, a silver lining in an otherwise cloudy day, a lot of people found it and I thank them for it. Um. A couple of other uh dates to remind folks, uh, to today is is Monday, the twenty second. Uh, a week from today on Monday, the twenty ninth is our Memorial Day ceremony. We begin up at Bedford Road School at ten o'clock. Uh, re-ceremony of the World War One Monument, uh, small parade down Bedford Road ending at Memorial Plaza, where we have the main ceremony. Uh, down at Memorial Plaza. So please join us on a Monday, Memorial Day, starting at ten AM, probably down to Memorial Plaza somewhere around uh ten thirty. The day after Tuesday, the third, there's a blood drive at the Lutheran Church. So uh, folks who are uh willing and able. Uh, can participate in that community need again Monday, Tuesday, May thirty, you can go to the Lutheran Church website. They encourage. Uh, uh, signing up for a time slot, although they do take walk-ins. Uh, same week on Friday. Uh, starting at seven PM, the annual fire department parade. Uh, so it's a a big week. Uh, you can celebrate Memorial Day. You can give blood and then you can. Uh, celebrate uh our fine volunteer fire department and the many others who attend on what's always one of the great nights in Pleasantville. And then uh, a month later, don't forget on uh Saturday, July eighth is the Pleasantville Music Festival. Um. Pleasantville Music Festival dot com gives you all the information. Uh. There is a one minute preview up at PCTV seventy six dot org, uh, which is a great opportunity to get a sense for what's coming. Uh, always a great day and we really encourage you to buy tickets uh early, avoid standing in line. And uh, take advantage of a little bit of a discount for early bird purchasers. Pleasantville Music Festival dot com, Monday, July eighth. Anybody have other announcements to make?
Yeah, I did. A couple of things. One, I just wanted to remind people that um, we are now in the phase of the year where we have a new law that um. Bans gas powered leak blowers. Um, so we're still working on getting the word out. Um. At Village Hall, we distribute the at various places in the village, but if you would like some, we have these postcards. Um, written up in English on one side, Spanish on the other side. Um, that has some basic information about the new regulation along with a QR code to the web page that has a more detailed account. So. Um, if you're interested in helping us spread the word, you can pick up a few of those at Village Hall. Um, and also we are continuing our rebate program. So if you happen to own a gas powered leak blower or. Lawnmower or weed whacker or snow blower and you would like to convert to electric. Um, we're going to have another drop off on June third of the recycling center from nine AM to noon. Um, where you can bring in your old equipment and then when you purchase your new electric equipment, you just email us the receipt and you'll get a rebate in the mail.
Thank you for that and and just be reminded that landscape firms are responsible for following these rules, but it's ultimately the responsibility of a homeowner. To enforce uh proper use and and respect for this new law.
Right, so um, if you could inform your landscaper if they're not already aware of this new law, that would, we would appreciate that.
All right, then the last date I wanted to throw out there is that this Saturday, uh, which is July twenty seven. Uh, a few of us from the board are going to be at the farm market uh. Taking taking the uh community table that the farm market has available for different groups every. Uh, every week. So a number of us are going to be uh taking various uh time slots at the farm market. This coming Saturday, uh, which is May twenty seven. And uh, if you uh have comments, concerns, questions, whatever. Uh, we'll be there waiting to hear them and uh respond. So farm market uh this weekend uh at the community table.
Yeah, I I wanted to also bring up, I've had some questions about if we're doing the block party this year and the dates. So this will be, I believe, on um a meeting. It's kind of your, it's going to be at November for one day.
Uh, the next work session.
The next work session will be discussing proposal. Um, just so people are looking and we're planning, we're. We're booking it. We're trying to plan it for September twenty third, Saturday, the twenty third would be the date. With the rain date of Saturday, September thirty. So um, we'll be informing. I'll come to the next meeting and I'll present what our plan is and what we're looking to do. Um, kind of going with what we did last year, that we did the closure of Wheeler Avenue and. Washington Avenue for the car show, so that kind of thing. So we'll be discussing all of that with the rest of the board. But just wanted to give everyone a date that we're we're now we're trying to move forward on those dates.
That's exciting.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, and thanks to the Chamber of Commerce for all the work they do on that. Um, Eric, do you want to just? Give an update? People are seeing all kinds of stuff going on. We've got. Con Ed ripping up Wheeler in Bedford for gas mains. We've got our contractor PCI ripping up Manville for our. Manville Road project. And uh, we have our folks and. Uh, some outside contractors making big changes down in Memorial Plaza.
Sure. So uh, we'll start with the Con Ed project here on Bedford and Wheeler. Uh, they're coming to the tail end of the project. Uh, right now they're making individual um service line replacements, business by business. So that's taking up some time because. They are coordinating with businesses depending on uh their work schedule. Uh, they estimate to have that wrapped up by the end of this week, if all things go well. Um, and then uh, they will be responsible for repairing both Bedford Road and Wheeler Avenue curb to curb in the sections that they. Touch likely to be later this summer. So. Uh, that's that project. Moving on to Memorial Plaza. Um, our curb and sidewalk contractor, Peter Landy, uh, finished up the northern median, uh, which was reconfigured to meet what will be the final condition once the Manville Road project is done. Um, so that new median uh now allows us to put an angle to parking on both sides of the road. Um, uh, the middle. Um, uh the middle line, the the center line has been uh moved to the center of the roadway uh and will be straightened uh throughout the corridor once uh we're able to abandon the slipway and get that dedicated right turn lane. Um, Seventy Memorial has their sidewalk right now fenced off. Um, they will be milling from the center line to their sidewalk, um maybe later this week, if not next week. At at which point um they'll they'll mill, regain, and then be able to open that sidewalk. Uh, uh jumping to Man, the Manville Road project, the contractor finished up uh the segment of the corridor between uh Washington and Tompkins. They will come back hopefully this week or early next week before the stay of concrete in the uh traffic my line right now. Um, then we are waiting on some answers from DOT on the signal, but PCI is likely to come back uh in July and start doing work on the monument island, which means people take down the flags, take out the plantings, and start doing the footings for the new signal. So um they estimate that they probably have about two more months, two and a half more months of of work to do. Um, in that section of the corridor. We are waiting for the traffic signals, which were ordered in December and had eight-month lead time. Um, and the pedestrian signals uh which will go in the upper part of the corridor right now. So we're kind of in this temporary condition. So they physically come in and get their new install. So I think.
So do we have any idea when those are likely to show up?
Uh August.
August, okay.
They all had this eight-month lead done.
Okay.
Uh, you said the median on Washington is concrete? Uh, being poured in the middle or?
The median on?
On Manville, between Washington and Tompkins.
Sorry, that's what I meant to say, yeah.
Yeah, so that's a mountable curve. It'll be a stamped concrete mountable curve.
Okay, so there's no green, there's no beautification in there.
No, the DOT.
I'm not, I'm not accusing anyone.
Well, we tried, believe me. A lot of, a lot of hours have been spent. We started out with trees, yeah.
Yeah, it started off, and then DOT nixed that idea with site line issues and threatens. And so we landed with a mountable curve, uh which also helped the um uh fire department and first responders.
Sorry, mountable means a car can drive over it?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's an angled curve instead of a straight.
Yeah.
Okay.
We should think about an event to celebrate once Memorial Plaza is complinks.
Yes, and um
Think about.
Just one other update, uh piggybacking up that, once we're, we abandon the slipway, the right-hand turn lane is put in, um, we will go back and put it, maybe upgrades the northern section of the plaza where we're gonna put trees, grass, and plantings. The timeline for that's all dependent on when the signals come in, can be installed. Um, so what, there's two scenarios, one in which we can get the project started at the tail end of this construction season and get as much done as we can. Um, or we just say, let's hold off and tackle it right at the break of uh of the spring in twenty twenty-four, but that is contingent on our timeline for Manville Road, so. But we have engaged Wagner-Hopson. Right now, they're putting together the construction documents in a bid package for that project. And on the Manville, an idea of when they'll re-align the roads, do they? Oh, that um temporary.
The striping, you mean?
Yeah, yeah. Um, temporary restriping uh likely to be done within the next week or two. Um, so we we've engaged. One of the questions is definitely that that center line where we know the 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 passing lane is a little tight, that will be when the stripe. We need to get feedback from DOT as to whether or not they want us to re-stripe the um crosswalks right now, because the the head heads don't align, they're not ADA compliant, so we're deferring to the DOT. Do you want us to just leave that alone, or do you want us to put the temporary stripping where the permanent stripping will be? Um, so they're coming out uh tomorrow to do a set visit with us.
Okay.
So, a whole lot flying around, to say the least. Um, so.
Do you have any sort of?
No, right.
On the, on the temporary striping of the new crosswalks?
Yes.
By the new median. Do we have the agency to say, yes, we're gonna do that, or do we have to do what they want?
We have to do what they want.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because we have kids crossing there all the time right now.
Yes.
So like every day, I mean, it might seem like not a big deal to go two months without a crosswalk, but it's the summer and that's thousands and thousands of crossings.
Absolutely. So um I think our preference is to certainly be able to straighten, you know, uh knowing that they don't align with the pedestrian signals, but just to have the the crossings align with the bump outs.
Right.
Align to the range.
One on the east end doesn't even have a signal anyway, but it's just confusing because you have two.
Yeah, so that is, that is our ass.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Sound gonna change? I asked this question before.
Uh, good question. I gotta find that.
Yeah, because these are existential questions you ask.
Yeah.
How does the sound work? Will DOT give us?
Yes, very much so.
So, so also just going back to Memorial, Memorial Plaza, the the monument section.
Yeah.
The condition of it for Memorial Day itself will be what it is, what it is right now?
Yeah, it's likely to be under construction in July or August, so.
So the, the good news is that at least that piece of the schedule aligned pretty nicely that
Right.
that Plaza is unaffected and a year from now, next Memorial Day, it should be done.
Right.
Yeah.
Um. The last thing I wanted to point out is, uh as we have discussed before, our pool project, we had originally hoped for a variety of reasons that we could be able to now that project uh already contracted or close to contracted now for shovels in the ground in September, right after the pool season. For a whole series of reasons, including a significant evamp associated with stormwater after after uh the Ida Storm last fall. Uh, that schedule has turned into the following year, so we will have this year's pool season and then next year's ball season, pool season, with the expectation that the work will begin. Um, right after Labor Day twenty twenty-four. So all of this, all of the stuff that uh we have just reported, that Eric reported is uh written out in the the WhatsApp email that we send out periodically to everybody who's on our email news list. And uh it has the advantage that you can skip to the parts that interest you and also that it's hotlinked to some of the images and drawings that uh help explain what's going on. So if you get that e-mail, uh please skim through and take a look. If you don't get that email and are interested in all of the stuff we have just described, sign up at Pleasantville-ny.gov, left-hand column, uh news and events. You can choose to subscribe to general news and to all kinds of other stuff, so. Uh, a whole lot going on. I would say uh an ethically large amount of stuff going on. Couple of people said to me uh on the one hand, why does everything happen to happen at once? And on the other hand, great that it happens all at once, because it's so disruptive, we might as well get it over, so.
And and this is very much a result, I think, of the COVID, you know, all of these projects have been deferred one way or another due to COVID, and now they're finally, you know, launching.
And in the category of the Con Ed gas main project, it's not as though we get a choice anyway, so. Uh, in in a funny way, it may be that it worked out reasonably well and uh uh again, a shout out to their contractor, I think, a really tough job, and they have managed it some pretty, but quite impressively, certainly going faster. They're not done yet, they're making the individual connections now, but um, a really tough project. I have a recite seat on it and was impressed by all the good work they did. All right, uh, we have uh two public hearings uh on our agenda. But before we skip to that, is there any comment from any member of the public? We don't have anyone attending live. If anyone is attending virtually and has a question, raise their hand. I see none. And so with that, is there a motion to open public hearing concerning introductory local law three of twenty twenty-three to amend chapter fourteen of the Code of uh of the Board of Ethics of the Village of Pleasantville? Second.
Okay.
All in favor? Uh, I, motion approved. Um, there's been an ongoing discussion with the folks on our uh uh Board of Ethics, uh led by uh the two uh longstanding members, both former mayors, um John Nona, also the county attorney, and Bernie Gordon. Uh, that group has now been fleshed out to its full complement of three, uh with Pam Pappish, who agreed to join. Uh but most of this work was before her arrival. Uh Bernie, John, uh with the assistance of Eric Gordon, Keenan Bean, our village attorney, have worked on expanding our Code of Ethics to uh clarify it in a bunch of ways, but also to expand it well past its old, I think, uh rather slim form that made reference solely to financial uh uh associations that might cause a unethical matter. Have I fairly described that, Eric?
Yeah.
Add to it?
Uh Jessica also provides further detail in uh the formal process in which a complaint is filed, um uh complaint form, um and basically updates the code in general.
So we have had a couple of work sessions uh with uh um Bernie Gordon, who was able to attend, and uh Eric Gordon. We've made a couple of uh edits to it along the way, but I think at this point uh all of us were comfortable with the way it was presented, and we offer it now for public hearing. Or any comment from anybody else, if there is any? Any comments at all from the board to add to what's been said so far?
Uh, and one, one very small question about the revised language. I hope it's small.
Okay.
Um. In the section we discussed last meeting, which is letter, letter M. Um, we're up for, if you're there, Peter?
I can bring it up, hold on.
It's a passive voice construction that I'm just, I don't understand who the responsibility, something is. Or Eric, maybe you can answer. It's it's the clause that says, if it is determined the conduct of an officer or employee, blah, 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 blah. And I just don't, is that the ethics committee?
It's the, the.
Letter M, page three?
Letter M, page four. Yeah, I'm on page four, the top.
Right, hold on. Okay, sure. So.
It's a second, second paragraph.
Second paragraph on the left, the first full paragraph on page four?
Yes.
If it is determined the conduct of an officer or employee does create or will create an appearance of impropriety, the officer or employee shall immediately recuse himself or herself from all discussions, deliberations, and determinations regarding the application or subject matter. Is that what you're asking?
I'm asking who does the determining.
So that paragraph is the responsibility of the officer employee, right? The officer employee always has the option of seeking an opinion from the ethics board, right, Eric?
And and even before that, uh even the village attorney, uh who can advise whether or not he believes, you know, can give a black and black or white.
So if it is determined, implies that it would have been determined by the ethics board, right? Or potentially by an advice of county.
Correct.
Do you think that needs clarification, uh Michael?
Bill, I just was asking because uh all of M is about gray areas that were previously not even in the document, and so and we ourselves were just talking about hypotheticals of, well, what about this one? What about this one? And so I just didn't know who's doing the determining.
Yes, yeah.
About a recusal, if it's.
The ethics board, because thi- this is under the the ethics committee code.
So the process would be uh an official thinks, thinks something might be, might appear in improper and then presents that to the ethics board, and they say either yes, that would appear improper, or no, that won't.
Yes, and if they did further to this paragraph we just read, then the law officer employee shall immediately recuse themselves.
Right.
Um, so I would suggest that we just say if the ethics board determines the conduct of an officer.
Or or the village attorney, right?
Well, yeah, but I think at that point, you actually want the ethics board to make the determination based on the advice of the village attorney. Because that's what they're there for, right? This, this is the person being required to recuse. Yeah, I would say the only, the only um potential downside there is you know, you may have a pending application, and then you need to uh notice the Board of Ethics meeting. And then you have to push it back, whereas it may be a relatively simple determination that can be made by the village attorney um via phone call.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Yeah, I would be inclined to leave it with that flexibility.
Well, I'm just saying, look at the scenario. Either the person is cooperative and agrees, right? In which case, you don't need either process, you just need the village attorney sort of saying, hey, this is what I, the way I think it falls. If they don't agree, then I think you need the ethics board anyway, right?
So I think, uh I mean, that would be a complicated circumstance. Are you suggesting the potential scenario where the village attorney recommends recusal? And the person then
I'm saying it's.
seeks to go to the ethics board to see if a different.
I'm, I'm saying if the, if the person agreed with the village attorney, you don't need this paragraph anymore, right? If they're gonna take the advice of the village attorney, they're going to recuse themselves.
Yeah, so what I mean, that could be, I think the idea was that this paragraph would include the flexibility that the determination might have been by the ethics board or the village attorney, depending on what route the person took to get the.
Right, I'm just saying, like, I'm imagining um like a senior living facility coming in and there being a question about somebody having a connection to the developer or something like that.
Yes.
Uh, who's on the, you know, somebody on the planning board, let's say. Um, and in that circumstance, I think they, they would either accept the advice of the village attorney, which is, I think, more or less what attorneys do, is they advise. Or if they didn't, then they would push, then then we'd need an actual determination. I'm not sure, can a village attorney make a determination of fact without?
They can advise.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, I, I don't, I imagine in such a scenario, if if the person who sought the opinion disagreed with the village attorney, uh the ethics board at some point might also consult the village attorney. I can say that it would be a very awkward spot to have, and and rather unlikely to imagine that a three-person ethics board would uh wo- wo- would disagree with the village attorney unless their discussion with the village attorney caused the village attorney to change his or her mind.
No, I totally agree with you. I'm just saying, like, I don't think the village attorney de- determines things. I think they advise. I think that's their job. I think boards determine.
I suppose. That that said, it would be very difficult to imagine a scenario where we had an officer or employee uh unwilling to accept the advice of the village attorney.
Right, well, if, I think there is, there is, there is sort of like this unpaid lobbyist kind of scenario where somebody has maybe been promised a future, you know, gig or work with somebody, it might work with them again. And is in, in a position on the planning board or something like that to vote for or against something where they might have feel like they're losing influence that they should appropriately have. And then, in that case, it's gonna end up in the, I'm just saying, like, if, if somebody doesn't accept the advice of the village attorney, it will go to the ethics board. So I don't think this really applies either way. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. All, 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 I don't agree with, disagree with anything you said. Uh, I'm not seeing this as a problematic clause, but if you are, what you, would you change it to?
I, I would just say, i- if uh I'd probably just say if the ethics board determines the conduct of an officer does create a whatever. Um.
I mean.
Because I assume it's the, the, the preceding paragraph would basically be where the advice returning would come in, and presumably, you'd never get to a determination unless somebody's fighting it.
Well, I don't know about that. I mean, I think honestly, in the history of our much more limited ethics uh board, that there have been some matters that a, a member of a commissioner board has asked.
No, you can ask them. No, I totally get that.
And I'm not aware of any circumstance where that gave rise to a uh disagreement. I think those folks were saying, hey, give me advice, I'll do what you think.
No, obviously, anybody can call on the.
Yes.
I'm just saying, like, in this process, basically, if there's this appearance of impropriety, um, somebody has to notice the appearance of impropriety, could be the person, and then they could ask for advice for sure. Or it could be a villager or an opposing party, you know, to the whatever decision's gonna be made, could be any of those sources. Um, and that's where you'd have the advice of the village attorney. And presumably, in ninety percent of those cases, that the, the person who's affected would either ask for the, the determination of the, of the ethics board, or they would just recuse themselves. the, the determination of the, of the ethics board, or they would just recuse themselves. So I'm saying you only get to the second paragraph in the case where they are asking for determination or, you know, they, they don't agree with the advice of the council and there has to be determination.
I, I feel like what you guys are asking for is basically laid out in section three. Um, which is about the role of the board of ethics. I mean, I don't care either way. I'm, I'm feel like it's fine anyway, but I feel like it's left as it is. Um, it becomes clear as you read ahead, but the advisory board question is the board of ethics. The board shall render advisory opinions to elected officials, officers and persons. Such opinions are to be rendered only pursuant to written requests by the officer or employee whose contact is questioned or by the village board of trustees or upon the board's own initiative.
Yeah, the only problem doesn't, it doesn't say determination anywhere in there. That, this is the only place that I read.
I'm sorry I didn't catch it last time. I just, it jumped out at me this time when I was trying to imagine the process by which someone is required to recuse themselves in a non-financial. Right, so if, if we're gonna, if we propose we're changing the parking on bigger street Grove Street and one of us lives on Grove Street, we have to recuse from voting on the parking change. Like those kind of things are, does that appear improper to vote on a law that affects your street? And if it does appear improper, who determines that it appears improper?
Yeah, I mean, I think they, they, I mean, we, for example, um, members of the planning commission or the zoning board routinely make decisions on matters in their neighborhood.
Correct.
Potentially on their street and there's no requirement to recuse themselves. There would be under this, and I think just in general logic, a reasonable requirement to recuse yourself if your action could be understood as self-interested. For example, um, your next door neighbor wants a variance to reduce the side setback and build something closer to your property than would normally be allowed.
Yeah.
Um, if you vote against that, it can be reasonably assumed that you are trying to protect your own property, even if you in your own mind don't, don't think that's the case. And interestingly, if you, if you voted to approve such a thing, you could make the argument that you're voting to accept this thing and perhaps adjudicate that because you don't wanna get in a fight with your neighbor, you know, those kinds of things. That said, you know, somebody two houses down or, or a development on an adjacent parcel that abuts a commercial zone, just as you have pointed out in the past, we all live here and we all know lots of people, right?
And we also all advocate for things because we're a legislative.
Sure.
Legislative.
I mean, it's a little different story in the case of a zoning board wh- where, where one's personally.
And, and I understood those examples more clearly.
Yeah, I, I mean, honestly, I think uh, I'm currently having to change this sentence if you wanna say if it is determined by the ethics board that the conduct of an officer uh, or, or by the ethics board or the village attorney. I, 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 I think it's, if that doesn't strike me as a necessary change.
It's a little confusing rereading this again because everywhere else it talks about an advisory opinion. And it's not clear to me what force of law that has. Again, the only, the only thing I'm really worried about in all of this, the only reason for all of this is one, to be clear that we want people to recuse if there's the appearance of impropriety or the appearance of conflict of interest, not just an actual conflict of interest, right? But then two, we wanna have a process where if that comes up, that, you know, it can be adjudicated, right?
Right.
Cause we can do, we can, the attorney can tell somebody today, you should probably, you know, step back on this. And that's nothing different than what we do today, right? And so it's not clear to me, like when we say, you know, any such request for an advisory opinion, what's the, what's the force of law of an advisory opinion? A determination sounds like, yes, you must do this.
And that.
You have to do this.
Right, you shall immediately recuse him or herself.
Right, but an advisory opinion?
So, so the, the ethics board is issuing on some level an advisory opinion. I mean, sort of a semantic thing.
I really, I, I guess that's funny that David and I are both interested in this because it's really a political theory question. You know, we both love political theory, but if, if, I mean, we've had a lot of five zero and four one votes, but we could potentially have a three two vote on a very big, big issue.
And we have had that.
Right, and that, that somewhere someone could say, hey, you just are, you just are gonna vote this way because you live in that neighborhood and that would be an appearance of impropriety.
And they wouldn't win unless.
What? Who would determine?
If, 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 if an applicant, for example, could file an article seventy-eight challenge to an act of a board, that's a legal challenge that wouldn't engage any of this.
Yeah.
Uh, it would be adjudicated by the courts, but uh, in, e- essentially this is all the purpose of this whole thing is for all appointed and elected officials to be aware of these concerns and to either recuse themselves proactively in a situation where they think it's an issue, in which case nobody needs to be asked. Or to say, I'm not sure, and get the opinion of these three people on the board of ethics.
Yep.
And or the village attorney, and it might very well be, if it's a splitting hairs kind of circumstance, that board of ethics might ask the village attorney.
Right.
I mean, as I already mentioned just at a moment. Which is what?
The third case is that they don't willingly recuse themselves, but there is the appearance of a conflict of interest.
But what you're saying, Peter, is that this isn't really a legal document that would be enforced.
Well, it's, it's.
In the same way that.
It's, it's not, it's not enforced, like, you know, we can arrest you.
But I think it, it would, it, it does, when it says determination, we can stop you from voting.
We totally can, yes.
But that's what I'm saying is like, I did, it's not at all clear to me that, first of all, there's the who's the weak question. I don't think it should be the attorney. I think it should be it gets to that point. The only way it gets to that point is if somebody disagrees with an opinion they've already gotten, right? And presumably it would already have been to the village attorney because that would be the first place that we would turn.
I'm not sure that'd be the first place that people would turn. I think, again, historically, people would turn to the ethics board, not the attorney.
They're only, it doesn't cost anything. You're only going to the ethics board if you have a good faith interest, understanding that they may say you should recuse yourself. I'm talking about the person doesn't. Yeah, or complain. But I'm saying somebody that who doesn't voluntarily go to the ethics board, then the, this is where we, the village trustees vote to send it to the ethics board or.
No, they can go independently.
They, they could, yeah, I'm saying like they.
Or any officer or, or employee can buy, you know, make a, make a complaint.
That will go to the.
Correct. And it, it doesn't, nor should it come through us as a vetting process.
Well, no, I mean, saying like there's in the law, there's, there's the possibility of us triggering this.
Right, just like the possibility of others triggering it.
Right.
But it's not like you have to get our approval to go there.
No, that's fine, but what I'm saying is that if somebody is not willing, I don't think that I don't know legally, I suspect legally the village attorney cannot prevent them from voting. I think it would have to be us or this ethics board if we empower them with the law, right?
It, it seems clear to me here that the ethics board by majority vote could say you need to recuse yourself and you are therefore required to.
Right.
Right?
I'm just wondering two things. I'm wondering if we should say the ethics board in the place where it says determination, but now, now I'm also wondering whether this is actually whether there's actually a difference between advisory opinion and a determination of a conflict or appearance of a conflict.
And, and how is that meaningful? Like what clause are you?
Well, an opinion could say it is our opinion that you have a potential appearance and you should recuse. And the person could say, okay, I appreciate that, but I don't agree and I'm not going to do that. Versus we've made a determination that you have an appearance uh of a conflict and under the village code, you are required to recuse and if should you vote in the meeting, your vote will not be counted.
So, so I think.
You could imagine.
Probably referring to section three.
Right.
D and E.
Yes.
You could imagine a multi- multimillion dollar property thing coming down to like a three-two vote on the planning commission or something.
Correct.
And the one person having mixed motives and not wanting to accept any opinion.
I, I, I.
That's probably true of every ethics board.
Like, I mean, you could wordsmith.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying wordsmith. I mean, I think literally, uh, and again, you could ask the lawyer. I think literally if it doesn't say this is a determination and it means you cannot vote, that's law, right? Then, then it's not.
Right, if it is determined.
Yeah.
The conduct of the officer.
Yeah. You could bend it, then that's hard as you can. Bring it whichever way. No, I'm just saying like, i- i- if, is it, uh, like, would I have a reasonable counter suit? If I said, hey, look, your law here says you're gonna give me an advisory opinion. I don't have any opinion you give me. It's my choice to accept or not. It should be determined, right? I mean, I think if someone was gonna challenge it that way, I think on its base you'd have some value, yeah, some merit, some argument. So I, I, I see where you're coming from.
Right.
I think, I, I, I just think with how they were trying, I think they're seeing that the board wouldn't do that. Like, once you're advised, that's kind of like, you're like, okay. Right, but uh, if that were true, then we wouldn't need any of this.
If you were advised by the ethics board that you your circumstance uh creates the appearance of impropriety, you are required to immediately recuse yourself, even if you don't like it.
Where does it say that?
It doesn't, he's adding, I was asking, I was adding that he's the agent of this verb.
Yeah.
He's the actor of the verb.
So where does it say you're required?
That is the paragraph that we began this conversation with that Michael brought up.
Yeah.
If it is determined.
Oh, oh, that one.
Oh, yeah, then it's this question by whom?
Yeah, yeah.
That, so that's the only place where it says determine in the whole.
The rest of them were advisory.
Yeah. Or the determination would have been done by the ethics board, right? It should be, yeah. So I just think my suggestion would be to put the ethics board in that section and then to change advisory opinions to determinations in the other places. Before issuing a determination with respect to such matter in E, the four any such rest for determination by the board of trustees or upon the board's own initiative shall be a majority vote of such board. The board shall render.
Fine, it sounds like there's enough concern here that we need to just end the public hearing and go back to the.
Feel like the problem is resolved just by if it is determined by the board of ethics. Because I see what you're saying about the advisory thing, but that's, that's just describing what the board of ethics does. That's separate from the.
It's, it's probably enough. I agree with you.
That's separate from the rules by which we have to adhere.
If that's the rule we want, if we want the board to be able to.
If you want them to be known to determine.
Someone that cannot participate in.
And, and, alright, so make the argument that we wouldn't want that. Make the argument that we wouldn't want that. Not necessarily your argument, but what would be that argument?
That appearance of impropriety is already a very big category.
A- and, and the result would be that a member of any board or commission.
Yeah.
Who seeks an opinion from the board of ethics and is told that they, they, in the opinion of the board of ethics, it does create the appearance of impropriety.
Maybe two say yes and one doesn't.
Whatever, but by majority, that's. Well, hold on, by majority vote. Then that member could say, I don't agree with you. I'm gonna vote on this anyway.
In a high stakes vote, so if.
Okay.
If it's a.
High stakes, low stakes, any stakes.
Okay, well, well, those stakes ones are less, less a big deal, honestly, like, you know, if we're.
It, it, but, but not less a big deal philosophically. My take on that is
Yeah.
You can, I, I understand the vagueness of it, and of course, there is some vagueness of it. I do think that the reality here is that we all uh, uh, a, adopt the requirement that we are seen by the public and true for commissions and boards of all kinds as fair arbiters of issues. And if, in the view of the ethics board, that's compromised, even if we disagree, you gotta suck it up. Right? You, you've got the people we have anointed to make these decisions is if it comes to that point, which just at the moment includes two former mayors, the county attorney and, and a private attorney with a person with legal background. If you disagree with it, however regrettable that may be to you, this is the context of democracy. You need to recuse yourself and you're required. And you don't have the option.
Yeah.
Of saying, all that was advisory, I'm voting anyway.
And these are, these are, just to be clear, they, they seem like stricter rules than any higher level of government.
Which might, which might under recent circumstances be, be a good thing.
Well.
And I'm sure that's true, but.
Appearance of impropriety, that's.
I mean, this appearance of impropriety text exists in lots of code of ethics, right? Lots of code of ethics. And honestly, I understand the concern, uh, but I, I think its practical effect will be that our ethics board is as, as quiet and unused as it has historically been. This is, in my opinion, very unlikely to generate a slew of issues. But I will say in this scenario you presented, that someone disagrees with it and votes anyway, that is certainly in a high stakes thing gonna produce an article seventy-eight.
Well, and, but also remember, the board is empowered to remove a member of a, of a, of another. They don't have to hold a public hearing, but that certainly would be.
Yeah. And failure to adhere to, to
Yeah.
The opinion of the ethics committee, sounded like cause, right?
Well, what if they don't agree with each other?
Well, it's a. Ultimately, if there's.
It's majority rules.
If there's gonna be an.
It can be unanimous, though.
If there's gonna be an ethics issue, right?
Yeah.
That the person doesn't agree with. Then either the ethics board is gonna have to decide and we have to make that binding or the village board is gonna have to decide to make, and we're gonna make that binding. The problem with the village board deciding is that then you can have another whole set of potential appearance of conflicts of interest, even if it's, we're not the board.
Further, the matter could be one of us.
Yeah, it could be one of us.
Right, it's not our thing. It's, we're, we're, we're ceding this responsibility to these three people whom we appoint, right?
Maybe we should just leave it the way it is.
I personally am.
I don't think, I don't think it's binding. That's the problem. I don't think it's solved. Like, you don't need any of this except to, to put something in here that says the village believes that an appearance of a conflict of interest is as serious as an actual conflict of interest and that um all of its officers and all board members should recuse themselves where there is that. And if you want, if you want an opinion on that, you can get one from the village attorney or the ethics board. That would do everything that this does unless you make this binding, and I don't believe it's binding.
How is it not binding? If it is determined, the conduct of an officer or employee does create or will create.
We don't say who determines.
But, 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 my concerns maybe leaving that vagueness is a.
No, I think it would just open us up to a lawsuit saying, hey, you've created a law that, you know, could have the mayor determining it, could have the village board determining it, could have the.
Village justice.
The, you know.
Village jury.
But re- reasonably speaking, it could be either the village board or, or the attorney.
If it is determined by the ethics board or the village and or the village attorney?
You don't want the village attorney.
No, okay, so in other words, so, so I, I'm okay with that. Does anyone disagree? So that clause at, uh, at, uh, in section M top of page four, the first full paragraph, if it is determined by the ethics board that the conflict, conduct of da, 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 remains the same, right? Is that aggressive?
Yeah, I think so.
Michael?
It addresses it. It's, if we want that to be true.
Okay, well, well, the justice, the justice department, every employee has to.
It doesn't address.
All satisfied by this.
How could we not? How could we not want this to be true? How could we not want that to be true?
Well, I, I think Michael's kind of imagining worst case.
I'm definitely, I work, I work in a large institution and that things go wrong.
Abuse of power.
Reminds a Pharaoh who do not Joseph.
Yeah.
This stuff happens all the time. I mean, you trust, you have a lot of trust in the current ethics board and the trust in your colleagues, but you have new people come in and they're, and to remove them, just to remove the power of an elected official based on, based on their two-to-one vote in the conversation that's not public is. I don't.
It is public.
It has to be public?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree with you that there is the potential for this to be misused, but I think we could address. Yeah. I, I agree with you that there is the potential for this to be misused, but I think we could address it if it comes to that. I think the bigger likelihood is that somebody would try to, because, you know, there's been flirtings with this of people who've been involved with the village and have had outside interests with developers or whatever, you know.
Like what?
Peter, Peter, would you be comfortable with unanimous?
No. Well, it's not a, it'd be a majority vote.
But it's, when things get more serious, we do go for unanimity in democracy, right? Or, or super majority.
There, there is, there is no requirement for anything other than a single majority on village board matters, except for certain matters like a zoning petition or a specific percentage of the, of the adjacent neighbors file a petition and that forces a super majority.
No, I'm talking about the ethics boards, about a group of appointed people to remove the powers of an elected official. It's a big.
In a specific, single matter. I, I, I am so not worried about this.
It's a matter that could last for, for years if it's a, if it's a large issue. Remove all deliberations and all this.
To be fair, if there, if there was, if this appeared to be unjust, they could still go to court to.
Yeah.
I mean, on a matter of.
Right.
And you say they like us or?
I'm just saying, like, let's say one of the planning commission members is the ethics board. Upon request of the applicant, says this person does have the appearance of a conflict of interest. They take that person out, the, the board then votes by the single vote to allow something that would have been disallowed had that person been voting. That person, I would think, could go to a court to try to enjoin that if they believe that there was a, a, a biased reason or whatever for, for that decision.
And I mean, recognize that the range of things that could potentially be in play here, where someone would be deprived of their vote, the, 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 pretty much the, the, the grandest move we might be making is a zoning change. The grandest move the planning commission is making is a site plan approval on a specific, big, big project. Or in the case of the zoning board, a zoning appeal on a big project. There's almost nothing that, that, uh, would be depriving some of their vote over a period of years. But, you know, just for example, you could easily have a circumstance where, where somebody was, I mean, just to be ridiculous about it, uh, a, a, an architect review board member who throughout his or her entire involvement in the, in the, uh, ARB has manifested that they hate blue. Someone comes, they want to paint their house blue. It's a, it's, it's a, it reasonably argued that it's appropriate in context. You should have the rights to paint your house blue. This person's going to vote no because they hate blue. Well, they should recuse themselves because they have manifested an incapacity to look at this firm, right?
Yeah.
So again, it's a stupid example, but you have to go pretty far down the road to cause yourself to be forced to refusal. You know, it's a different story, whatever. X, Y, Z corporation comes and wants a zoning change. Your spouse works for X, Y, Z corporation. You could say, look, it's my spouse. It's not me. Well, probably you need to recuse yourself, right? It's just too close. The appearance of impropriety. If your, if your child works for X, Y, Z corporation, that might be a moment where you say, hey, my child doesn't live with me. They don't pay my, have contributed to my mortgage. Uh, they're on their own. They live somewhere else. Advise me and, and, and.
Here's a question. So if we were talking in the village board about closing Wheeler Avenue.
Yes.
And making a pedestrian street, would you have to recuse yourself?
I would say no, because I have an office on Wheeler Avenue.
Right.
No. I think the answer to that is no, unless I, uh, uh, was opposed to that for reasons that clearly are specific to my benefits. Which I think would, would not be the case then. Would you, you know, if you had a village board member who operated a storefront and, and, uh, was presenting the argument that closing it to create a pedestrian mall would, would, uh, deprive his customers of driving out, his or customers, I think that probably would warrant.
But what if we were going to have a two-two vote? And somebody could credibly say, well, this is going to make your life harder because you can no longer park in front of your office and come and go five times during the day. And therefore you can't be impartial about this.
That, I mean, someone could make that argument, and I believe that goes to the, to the question of what happens when it's on your street? What happens when it's someone you know? What's happening when it's someone that goes to your church? Those things have been pretty well vetted by the courts, and there are always nuances to every argument, but.
So taking David's example through our process, if anyone went to the ethics board and they said, this has an appearance of impropriety, you cannot vote.
So be it.
You would accept the judgment.
I, I, I.
Removing your vote.
That there is zero chance that I would not accept, even in the current circumstance, the opinion of the ethics board. Zero chance. And honestly, what we need is boards and, and, and commissions who take that view.
Now, again, I guess to, just to check, do a check some balances. How are right now our ethics board, how are those members? Are they on terms? Are they?
Yeah.
Are they? How often are they on these terms?
I mean, it's, it's, it's outlined here.
Yeah, I think it's a little easier.
Right? It describes.
And are there term limits?
There are no term limits.
Subject to the. The right word. So these are mayoral appointments.
One shall hold up for one year, one for a term of two years, and one for the term of three years?
And the idea of that was to stagger it so that you only have one person either coming off or reappointing every year. Right?
And so, oh, if we. I mean, I'm just thinking that, you know, just checking. Let's just say, thinking of every scenario. Someone had an, you know, someone on the board had an issue and couldn't put aside their view on that.
Someone on the ethics board.
On the ethics board. Their view on what you're doing is just not correct. Then is that going to carry for how long? You know, that's kind of where I'm making of. That, that could, you know, there's a certain view on, you never know that could happen, but I, I think if it came to that, I think that that was where this, this issue would get really bad, where I think, but I think that having those kind of checks and balances, I think, can help us in that way. And, and so right now we only have two, right?
We have three. We just appointed.
The other person. Right, okay. Um, so I, I don't know. I mean, the way I look at it is that I'm hon, I'm honestly okay with either one. Um, I understand if we, we put, if we do the amendment and we update it to have that, I think it's, it's perfectly fine. I, I, I'm not concerned on my end that, you know, I'm willing to give that power to them. That's just, this is just me personally, I'm not speaking for anyone. But in the role that I'm in, that I, I trust, you know, people we've appointed in that role. And I think that if they ask me to recuse myself from something, I, at this time, I'm, I'm okay with that. I'm, you know, it's, it, it's, it's obviously losing your ability to, to have your voice heard and to represent your constituents is an important thing. But I think at some point that, that, you know, and I think it kind of comes with the job that there's going to be some, if someone's telling us like, look, this is how it looks. And it's going to be, it's not just going to be a competition with them. It's going to be with the village attorney and all that. And once it's determined in that, I just think for me publicly doesn't look good that I'm now fighting it. Um, because I'm kind of, you know, it, I think it creates tension and it's not a good look for a board overall. That, that's my view on it. I understand the concern of what can happen and the fact that we could lose our power. But I think just in the role that we're in and what we're doing, I, I, I think, obviously, you never think I hope it gets to that. As an attorney, I always think of worst case scenario as well, but at least in this role, I'm okay with having it either way, leaving it the way it is, or make it stricter by putting that they have the ability to essentially make the decision and then that's binding.
Which I, I believe they do and, you know.
Plenipotentiary clear by.
Has the ability. Well, I guess if we did.
I mean, that, that amendment would just describe.
Yeah.
I, I, I.
That, that, the last paragraph, they did, it is determined kind of a, of a officer or a district. Yes. It was determined by the.
By the ethics board that the conduct, right?
Yeah.
The proposal here is, in that clause, the first full paragraph on page four, to revise it to say if it is determined by the ethics board that, right? By the ethics board that is inserted. And I think that change is insignificant enough that we can do that on the fly in the public hearing. Would you agree, Eric?
Yes.
And to resolve David's question about, about language with section three, you could even say if it is determined by an advisory opinion of the ethics board.
Oh, yeah, actually.
That would resolve all the.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I like that.
Where is that? Oh, sorry. Hmm? You should be a lawyer.
I was a lawyer and I decided to be dumb.
Okay.
Which, which section? It's the same, Michael.
The same one that, that bothered me because it had no subject. If it is determined by, by an advisory opinion of the ethics board or what are we calling?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It's permitting that one parent.
That's true.
I'm just adding a few words.
Yeah, okay.
Or, or do we simplify simply to say if the ethics board determines, uh, if the ethics board ad, advice determines that?
Well, we say advisory opinion in section three.
I think Michael's.
Fine, go ahead. Fine with me. I totally.
If it is determined by the ethics board.
By an advisory opinion of.
Okay.
Because we use advisory opinion in section.
And then we don't have to change anything else.
Exactly.
Okay, done.
Thank you for hearing me out. I really just want to know who has the power to make the decision.
So let me say, in the, in the category of, of, uh, good news based on a fairly long history with this. Uh, we've had multiple moments when members of one or another board or commission have recused themselves voluntarily, seeking no advisory opinion at all.
Sure.
If anything, there have been some moments where, uh, a member of a board or commission has recused themselves and some of their colleagues have thought it wasn't necessary.
Right.
Um, but we have a pretty long history in this community of folks uh, proactively wanting to make sure that they stay on the right side of everyone's perception of their fairness. And I, I am unaware in all the years I've been involved of any moment when uh, a, any member of a board or commission disagreed with the advice they received when they sought broader advice. Whether that was from the chairman of their board in zoning or planning, whether that was through then, village attorney or the ethics board. So I think all these are reasonable concerns and there is inevitably, every scenario you imagine can be tweaked in one way or another to create even, even more unclarity. I think the odds of anyone using this as a force for ill are very low. Okay.
So.
All right?
All right.
So, uh, any further comment or is there any comment from, let me stop my screen sharing here?
Anybody stayed on through all this?
Yeah, let's see if we have any. Abby is still on there. Abby Luby, right? She, she's the, uh, Noreen is on. Uh, is there any comment from any of us or from anyone on, on Zoom? All right. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed by unanimous vote. Uh, when we come to the approval of the law, we'll have to reference the modifications we made.
Correct.
All right. Is there a motion? Uh, this one ought to be a, a quick one. There are motion to open a public hearing concerning introductory local law four of twenty twenty-three to amend chapter one seventy-three, article seven, section sixty-seven of the Code of the Village of Pleasantville concerning angles parking.
Some.
Is there a second?
Certainly.
Welcome to, uh, uh, the public hearing. Eric, this simply refers to the introduction of angle parking on Memorial Plaza.
Yeah, our code is unique in that we call out the angled parking spaces and so, um, we are clarifying that in our code.
And what we decided in work session, uh, last time, follow up to a number of work sessions was to establish an angle park on both sides of, uh, the road in front of the post office along Memorial Plaza. This is on the, on the, uh, uh, street side, not the transient, not the commuter side. Uh, and we'll end up with angle park on both sides. Any comment from anyone on the board or anyone watching?
Um, I wanted to say, we, I believe we get more parking spaces. I noticed your mind is, how many? Is it four? Um, I, on one side, but in case someone asks us why we did that, change this and how it's going to benefit parking, I think it's important to note that. We're getting more.
Yes, we get more parking, uh, and two, two other things happen. Uh, one is we make it easier to get in and out because you don't have to parallel park between cars against the curb. Uh, or make a full ninety-degree right-hand turn to get into a space against the median. But the other piece of it, which not everyone will like, but which I think is wise, is it, uh, means that, uh, folks will be diminished in their capacity to, uh, pull out and make a, you know, three hundred degree U-turn or to double park.
Makes it safer for pedestrians as well.
And for drivers.
And for drivers.
So.
It's great law.
All right. All for it. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. All right. On to the resolutions, number one eighty-six.
Resolved that the board of trustees hereby approves the minutes of the regular meeting held on May eighth, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions, corrections to the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, number one eighty-seven.
Resolved that the board of trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for fiscal year ending twenty twenty-three is listed below. Budget transfers of the general fund, one thousand dollars from DOT miscellaneous to municipal associations, seven hundred and twenty dollars from finance conferences to fiscal agent fees, two thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars from contingency to engineering contractual services, three thousand one hundred dollars from contingency to cleaning services, three thousand dollars from contingency, uh, capital fund, five hundred and sixty-five dollars, uh, rec preschool outside services to rec youth outside services, two thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars from rec preschool outside services to pool equipment, and three thousand three hundred dollars for, to rec, from rec adult outside services to pool equipment. Uh, that's a total of sixteen thousand six hundred and nine dollars. Budget transfer of the refuse fund, one thousand four hundred and one dollars from refuse employment, retirement to refuse health insurance. Uh, increased revenue and expense of the general fund, nineteen thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, um, fees, police traffic.
Six cents.
Oh, six cents. Thank you. Fees, police traffic control, uh, police overtime, uh, fund, uh, fund balance, general fund, uh, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars transferred to capital for the pool project and thirty thousand dollars transferred to capital for Wheeler Lot EV charger. That's a total of one hundred and eighty thousand. Increased revenue and expense of the capital fund, three thousand, inner fund transfer from general fund for the Memorial Plaza project, one hundred and fifty thousand inner fund transfer from general fund for pool project and thirty thousand inner fund transfer from general fund for the Wheeler Lot EV charging station, a total of one hundred and eighty-three thousand.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, one eighty-eight, David.
So the board of trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated May twenty-second, twenty-two, and three for fiscal year ending twenty twenty-three, covering check numbers one oh seven, two five two to one oh seven, three seven nine. From the general fund, one hundred and forty-two thousand four hundred and thirty-four and fifty-one cents. From the special fund, two thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty, ninety-two cents. From the water fund, sixteen thousand four hundred and six dollars and eighty-six cents. The capital fund, ninety-seven thousand four hundred and eleven and forty cents. The refuse fund, two thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty cents for a total of two hundred and sixty thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. Payment of claims is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, one eighty-nine, Michael.
Resolved that the board of trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, covering check numbers one zero seven three eight zero to one zero seven three eight three from the general fund, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars and eight cents. From the water fund, seventeen thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifteen cents. From the refuse fund, fifteen thousand and fifty-five dollars and fifty-two cents for a total of two hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. Payment of claims attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, two questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, one ninety.
Buy your music, buy your music fest tickets.
Buy them now.
That's my comment.
Yeah. Pleasantville Music Festival dot com.
Okay. Um, one ninety. Whereas there has been a proposed New York State Municipal Workers' Conversation Alliance fan document pursuant to section. Whereas there has been a proposed New York State Municipal Workers' Conversation Alliance plan document pursuant to section fifty-three to the Workers' Compensation Law herein after the plan. And whereas the Village of Pleasantville is eligible for membership in the plan and where the Village of Pleasantville has made an independent investigation of the plan and review the plan document and has concluded that it would be in the interest of the Village of Pleasantville to participate therein. Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Pleasantville internal membership in the plan pursuant to section fifty, subdivision three A of the Workers' Compensation Law and be a further result that village administrator be and hereby is authorized and instructed to execute the plan's charter document of on behalf of the Village of Pleasantville and be a further result that the custody of all joint plan monies by the plan administrator under the plan be the same hereby is approved.
Is there a second?
We're good.
So this proposes that we uh rearrange our compensation insurance from uh the plan we have had in the past to join uh a a Comp Alliance Plan, which is rather similar in concept to the internal plan. We've been a member and partner up for a long time.
Yeah.
Uh, we're about to have a second resolution further to that, but you want to describe, Eric?
Yes, so uh we've used Perma, which is essentially a self-insured fund. Um, we have a two-year fixed rate uh at a reduced amount um with a carrier called Comp Alliance, essentially uh very similar to Perma, which is our our carrier.
But also Comp Alliance uh is is structured in the same manner as NYMER, essentially an entity owned by its
Municipal.
Municipal clients and 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 serves only municipal clients, as is the case for our our property insurance.
So I thought we had voted on this already. Is this a different?
So in order for us to, we voted to uh execute the contract. Now we have to pass a resolution that goes to the state and the uh workers' comp.
Okay, but it is the same, the same.
Same.
Yeah, now now we should see administration of the contract.
Right.
Got it.
The legalese, right? Other questions on this? There's uh one ninety-one continues it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, one ninety-one, Nicole.
Resolved that the Village of Pleasantville hereby elects pursuant to subdivision three A of section fifty of workers' compensation law to become a self insurer as to workers' compensation claims against this municipality and be it further result that pursuant to section fifty subdivision three A of said workers' compensation law, notice of such election shall be filed with the chairman of the Workers' Compensation Board Self Insurance Section and be it further result that this election shall become effective on July first, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Essentially uh uh adjoining this self-insured pool of municipalities.
That's right.
As compared to a private market insurer.
Right.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, one ninety-two, David.
So the board of trustees here raises the donation of two Pleasantville Music Festival tickets for Pleasantville Children's Center.
Is there a second?
Second.
Pleasantville Children's Center is about to celebrate its fiftieth anniversary, so congratulations to all. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, one ninety-three, Michael.
Is this where we uh added new language?
Yeah.
This is the new language, yes.
Where introductory local law three of two thousand twenty-three has been introduced to amend chapter fourteen of the Board of Ethics of the Village of Pleasantville. And whereas a public hearing concerning introductory local law three of two thousand twenty-three was held in clothes on May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, now therefore be resolved, the board trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby adopts local law four of two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
So further to conversation we just had in the context of the public hearing, uh the uh current attachment, which anyone who is watching may have picked up, has been modified in a very minor way to clarify uh the second paragraph at the top of page four of the PDF.
And as we spoke, Alyssa went in, gave those updates, and it is now attached. We can.
Go, Alyssa. I mean, almost before we think of it, she did it.
Yeah.
She did it before we talked about it.
Exactly.
Thank you, Alyssa. Alyssa, you could have saved us a lot of time by telling us what to do.
She and subject.
All right, thank you, Alyssa. Uh, I see that you're on there if you're listening. Uh, so um as a result, the final language with that update already attached. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. One ninety-four, back to you, Paul.
Whereas introductory law, local law four of two thousand twenty-three has been introduced to amend chapter one seventy-three, article seven, section sixty-seven of the code of the Village of Pleasantville concerning angled parking. And whereas a public hearing concerning introductory law, local law four of two thousand twenty-three was held in clothes on May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three and now therefore be resolved that the board of trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby adopts local law five of two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, one ninety-five, Nicole.
Resolved that the board of trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign a sponsorship agreement with Lexington Center for Recovery for the two thousand twenty-three Pleasantville Music Festival. The agreement is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lexington Center, for joining and assisting us in putting this on. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, one ninety-six, David.
So the board of trustees hereby appoint Seth Gladstone to the Climate Smart Committee effective April, two thousand twenty-three to term expiration of April, two thousand twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions?
Yeah, we're grateful that Seth has joined our group. He brings a special expertise. He works for Food and Water Watch and um so it's a great addition.
Great. Thank you, Seth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, one ninety-seven, Michael.
Resolved that the board of trustees hereby accepts the resignation of Sean Kelly, Recreation Assistant Panther Club, effective May twentieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. One ninety-eight, back to Paul.
Resulted that the board trustees hereby authorizes the closing of the capital account, Nanahegan Pond, fiscal year two thousand twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm related to this, but remind reminding me, uh, a new book is out by Michael Inglis. You probably know more than I, but I.
I do. I'm interviewing for my podcast.
Why don't you just give a shout out for it? It's about our Nanahegan.
Yeah, so it's called uh, I think it's called Wood and Water, is that right?
I have a picture of him holding it.
It's available at our local village bookstore. Uh, so it's really interesting because it's about the area just upstream. Woods and water, thank you. It's just upstream of the Nanahegan Pond um and really about the whole Nanahegan uh stream watershed, but he's been hiking that area for twenty-five years. Um, for those who don't know, the aqueduct, um, the Catskill Aqueduct that delivers water to New York City runs through that area. And there's a path there and what was once farmland and which is now this kind of intersection of aqueduct and power lines has a a bunch of wildlife back there, including um a bear has been spotted, bobcats, um coyotes, foxes, um and all kinds of interesting plants as well. So um one of the things I think that's really cool about the book is that at the end it has um uh an inventory of all the the plants and animals that he um has identified back there. Um, so that's a real service that he's done to us.
So a great in-depth study of an area lots of folks uh are only loosely familiar with and also illustrated by Gigi Kolek.
Yes.
Recently uh retired from a role as president of the P C T V board, so a very Pleasantville book and uh available at a very Pleasantville bookstore. Please take a look. All right. Back to the mundane, uh, all in favor of one ninety-eight to close the capital account, Nanahegan Pond?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, one ninety-nine. David.
Resolved that the board of trustees hereby authorize the village administrator to sign the annual agreement with New York Municipal Insurance Reciprocal NYMER for property and casualty insurance coverage from June one.
Hold on, one ninety-nine.
It was gonna be neat, but that's okay.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Well, hold it. Let's back up. You're doing the right one. You do one ninety-nine. It's my fault. I screwed up everything's logic.
Resolved that the board trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign an agreement with the Pleasantville Municipal Incorporated P C T V effective June first, two thousand twenty-three to May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. The contract is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this reflects our budget conversations and our discussion with P C T V. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Two hundred. David.
Now you know I look ahead.
I was gonna say, you know, way ahead of me and I screwed you up. I apologize.
So the board of trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the annual agreement with the New York Municipal Insurance Reciprocal NYMER for property and casualty insurance coverage from June first, two thousand twenty-three through May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
As reported, NYMER uh is essentially a uh uninsured pool uh with shared ownership by all of its members, which now accounts for, I think roughly nine hundred government entities in New York State. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, two oh one, Michael.
Resolved that the board of trustees hereby authorizes the donation of two Pleasantville Music Festival tickets for Blue Rock School.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What is Blue Rock?
What's Blue Rock School?
I don't know.
They're uh, they are a local um music organization recommended by uh the music best director.
So I mean, obviously, all of these, in some cases, we're supporting a local organization, but we're also hoping to expand visibility of of uh of the festival. Um. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, two oh two, Paul.
Resulted that the board of trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign a sponsorship agreement with R M A of New York for the two thousand twenty-three Pleasantville Music Festival.
Is there a second?
Second.
R M A, I believe, is involved in uh infertility treatment.
Hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, two oh three, Nicole.
Resolved that the board of trustees hereby authorizes the donation of two Pleasantville Music Festival tickets to Westchester Ballet Company.
Is there a second? It makes clear that if you go and buy tickets at Pleasantville Music Festival dot com, you will be in good company. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, two oh four, David.
Resolved that the board of trustees hereby authorizes village administrator to sign an agreement with Sheraton Terrytown Hotel for the two thousand twenty-three Pleasantville Music Festival.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very much appreciate the support of Sheraton Terrytown. Uh, part of our obligations to our musicians in some cases uh is to provide hotel rooms and they have agreed to provide uh some hotel rooms for free and other hotel rooms at a significant discount in exchange for uh naming rights for Tent City.
We've now just helped the paparazzi.
So if you live in Tent City for the day, you will uh uh be at Sheraton Terrytown Hotel, Tent City. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, two oh five, Michael.
Eric, the Sheraton Terrytown Tent City.
Yeah.
Just processing that.
Yeah, I mean, maybe there'll be some, there might be some word smithing there. I think that's the idea, right?
Great, great.
At the Pleasantville Music.
I I appreciate your sponsorship.
I do too.
Resolve, two oh five, resolved that the board of trustees hereby authorize the village administrator to sign a sponsorship agreement with Spectrum Designs for the two thousand twenty-three Pleasantville Music Festival.
Is there a second?
Second.
Again, Spectrum Designs, great organization here in Pleasantville uh providing training and job opportunities for folks with special needs. They were a sponsor last year and are coming back again. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, two oh six.
Paul.
Resolved that the board of trustees hereby authorizes village administrator to sign an agreement with bands in town, L C, in the amount of one thousand twenty twenty-one and forty-five cents for the purposes of email notifications for fans of performance artists related to the two thousand twenty-three Pleasantville Music Festival.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
This is essentially a marketing effort. Uh, these guys are in a position to capture folks who follow or interested in the bands on our set list uh and reach out to them specifically, as well as to reach out to folks who have attachments and interest in bands uh that are similar to some of our uh performers. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, two oh six, uh, two oh seven, Nicole.
Resulted that the board of trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign an agreement with W F U V radio station in the amount of three thousand dollars for the purposes of advertising the two thousand twenty-three Pleasantville Music Festival.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions? F U V is a Fordham station.
Indeed it is.
Hmm.
Um.
You're not to accuse yourself.
I I think you do not. You have no personal interest. I don't know. Does the theology department rise or fall based on the fortunes of F U V?
No, but we send many great uh communication professionals out to the world.
All right.
Got their start F U V.
More power to you. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. All right, that is the last of our regular agenda items. Is there anything uh to add in the way of new business? All right, if not, we will adjourn our regular meeting. We will back to work session to pick up on items we uh were late on. And then at the conclusion of our continued work session, uh, is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss real property personnel and contractual matters?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Sort of.
Sort of. Sort of. Uh, thank you all. Motion approved. Uh, we've adjourned our regular meeting, headed back into work session. As reported, uh, we will see you again on Monday, June twelve. Uh, but in the meantime, we very much hope to see you on Monday, May twenty-nine, at Memorial Day Services beginning at ten and on Friday, June two, at the Fire Department Parade, uh uh beginning at seven P M. And in the meantime, on Tuesday, the thirtieth, in between those two events, if you are of a mind to support your community by giving blood, there's a blood drive at the Lutheran Church. Thank you all and good night. Uh, I mean, he's the final.
Here the good, giving blood is good for you.
Good for you?
My, well, my mom's eighty-five-year-old boyfriend does it relatively frequently.
Very medieval person.
That's true.
It's either medieval or it's, you know, Keith Richards in the nineteen eighties.
Leeches. It's all about leeches.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that was, you and I go back to medieval times, right? That was a a colonial medicine practice, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Although leeches are not giving the blood back to anyone else, so the good advantage of this is.
That's true.
So what is the notion there that that?
I don't know. I just it just was reminded of that.
Getting rid of toxins or something?
I don't know. I'll have to ask.
I'm not allowed to give.
He's an interesting guy.
Hmm. I'm not allowed to give blood, so.
I'm not either.
Get this benefit. My blood pressure's too low.
Too low? Well, that's good.
I have really low blood pressure.
I mean, it is. Yeah, you don't, you want to be right in the middle.
Yeah, don't stand up too fast. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I get dizzy if I stand up fast. Does that happen to you?
Oh, yeah. Almost every time.
Yeah.
Well, not every time, but.
You're so, you're too tall.
All spread out. But no, every time I have to give blood for just a regular blood, blood drive, say, um, you're gonna, can I, can I have a juice? Like, yeah, I'll give you one a second. I'm like, no, no, I need it. I need it with me.
As the blood is coming.
Yeah, you're not. It's like, are you gonna faint? I'm like, fuck. Oh. But juice does it. I don't, I don't know about you, but my.
I don't know. That's a big question.
I just have to get the blood sugar and then I'm fine. Fainting is very uh
This conversation is gonna be.
Very shocking. Oh, yeah, are we, are we live?
Yeah, we are live, yes. Abby has asked and I'm responding, are you going to discuss the A one district?
I just broke news. Trustee Pepper has.
The answer is yes.
That's why I mean, I'm glad you're still on.
Cover, cover.
Despite.
Like abnormally low or?
We're just talking about giving, donating blood.
Oh, okay.
That I, yeah, so I'm not advised to donate blood.
So Abby, you had raised your hand. Was that just to add as the question I just answered? Cause I have permitted you to talk.
Okay. Yes.
All right, you're happy there? Okay.
Yeah.
Um. You're welcome. Sorry. Uh, okay, so uh a couple of things just to add to the context, obviously, uh, we have a few things to consider. One is uh what all of our thoughts are about the report we now have back from um B F J, comments that all of us settlers have received in our conversations with constituents. Uh, I have a few things to add that arise out of the whole housing discussion uh statewide and uh also the question of how to engage uh, statewide, and, uh, also the question of how to engage with the community, uh, with, uh, this ongoing discussion. So, uh, just, just as a one point to mention, uh, Jonathan Cunningham had posted a fairly long statement on our webpage. Uh, Facebook page, and, um, he and I are gonna get together and I will go, go through that with him and report on how that plays out. Uh, he is, you can find it on our, on our Facebook page. But he is challenging some of the, uh, uh, conclusions of BFJ, or at least questioning whether they are broad enough or realistic enough. Uh, one example, for example, was in the, in the example of the generation of school kids. If, for example, fifty school kids were generated, which might not be an issue district-wide, what if they were heavily concentrated in BRS, for example, those kinds of questions? So we can go through that, and I'll, I can report to you the conversation I had with him. Um, but, uh, you know, we're confronted here with a BFJ report that essentially says that, uh, that the traffic counts are not likely to be a significant contributor to increased traffic uh, because they are modest in comparison to the existing uh, traffic and, and likely, in some cases, modest in comparison to either the existing uses or alternative non-residential uses of the existing property. So although it has not been vetted yet, one example of that is the four forty-four Bedford Road application, which they then put a hold on, included their analysis, again, to be vetted, this is the applicant's analysis, uh, that the full occupation of the existing building uh, would generate more traffic than the residential use they propose. So obviously, that is, is subject to review and would be the subject of a review uh, in the context of the planning commission, but there you have one example, which is to say, we're not talking about locations that won't have impacts if they're not, for example, residential. The question is, by restricting their development for residential, are we achieving the goals folks have commented about? Avoiding increased traffic and avoiding impacts on water, sewer, police, fire, ambulance. I think BFJ's report essentially says those impacts are relatively modest. Folks like Jonathan, for example, and doubtless others, uh, are challenging some of those conclusions. Happy, I think, to see the, the even less conservative approach based on the potential build-out. The other point, that obviously is made clear by BFJ, but is also made clear by our own world of zoning, is that there are a whole bunch of tripwires in zoning, and some of them are, 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 are valves that we could adjust. So, for example, you've got, uh, lot coverage requirements, you have, in some cases, setback requirements. You have floor area ratio requirements, and you have height requirements and parking requirements. And so, but all of those things, uh, interrelate, and in many cases, a project that can meet most of them fails on one or more of them. And that is either a circumstance that means it won't be developed, or they seek a zoning change or a variance. Um, certainly, the history in Pleasantville of variances, for example, for parking has been, uh, that it's relatively likely to get a variance for redevelopment of an existing building that has no parking, where if you declined a variance, you couldn't really use the building for anything. Um, it's a good bit harder to achieve a parking variance for a new construction in a circumstance where there is the potential to create new parking. Um, the issue that existed back in twenty seventeen, when we changed the zoning to allow four stories, uh, in the block that includes now the building at Seventy Memorial, uh, uh, was the result of a whole bunch of analysis, a piece of which was the recognition that, uh, providing onsite parking, especially in a place where you had to dig, requires a pretty big lot and requires a lot of money and is unlikely to be achievable unless the building has great, uh, economic potential. So all of those things come into play, and folks, for example, can look at the soft sites that are part of the BFJ analysis and say, well, all of these things could happen. I just to call one out, what if, for example, the Jean Jacques site were, were proposed for three-story residential, which would be permitted as a right under current zoning? It would require a significant onsite parking, which could only be achieved if a significant amount of space on the ground floor were devoted to parking, or if they dug. So those are very significant expenses that obviously go into the calculus of whether it's possible to do something, all of which is affected by demand and interest rates and all of those things, but, um, Susan Favate's memo to us ends with an analysis of some of the things that could be changed that would moderate, uh, the potential build-out based on changing X or Y or Z as elucidated there. So all of those things are, are presented to us at the same time as uh, it's gonna be interesting to see the results of the traffic counts that we're doing right now on Wheeler Avenue, uh, I mean, on Bedford Road. Um, and in some cases, we have some data to compare them to, in some cases, we don't. But, um, interestingly, Susan's numbers, using the actual traffic count data comparing twenty twenty-three to twenty-nineteen, show a reduction, a modest reduction in traffic.
Oh, it's twenty seventeen.
Maybe it's twenty seventeen. You're probably right. Um, so modest production in traffic. Um, and, you know, that feels contrary to folks based on their personal experience. Um, I will say certainly, anecdotally, my experience is that traffic is way better now than the sawmill that was open. Certainly, the likelihood of getting trapped as you come safe on pace uh, into the village seems way better, because we don't have so many people trying to get off the sawmill and, and get past it. So, uh, there's that piece of it, but, um, the, the, the other piece is Nicole and I were just at the New York Council Mayor's Annual Meeting, and quite a few conversations there about housing and, and and the fact that the governor's housing compact ended up being completely removed from the budget. Um, and conversation I've had with others along this and a group of seven of us on the Housing Subcommittee for the Westchester Municipal Party Association, it's clear that this idea is not gone, and it's going to be back in, uh, significant ways. Um, and honestly, I was surprised that all of it ended up being removed from the budget.
Hmm.
Uh, perhaps there was some thought that some of it could be enacted legislatively in the balance of the session, which honestly is the way it should be anyway. Packing all this stuff into the budget is sort of that Trojan horse method of public policy. But it seems unlikely at this point, based on those who know that in the remaining, I guess, what, three weeks left in the Albany Legislative Session, it doesn't seem likely that something significant is gonna happen. That said, this is the second year in a row that this has been a significant issue, as we've described before, the development community is very heavily pressing for this, as is, uh, uh, folks focusing on housing affordability and housing, uh, justice. And, um, a similar conversation is going on, just got an article today, which I can forward to all of you about the conflicts going on in Connecticut, which already has an existing law. So that story isn't done, but, uh, and it's gonna be back. I do think there will be significant pressure on, uh, all of us, not just Westchester, but New York statewide, to generate more housing as a means of increasing supply and to generate more affordable housing. Uh, but, you know, there's this overarching notion that if you generate more housing in general at market rates, eventually, it will be, uh, a force that tends to moderate rents and housing costs. I mean, I talked to a bunch of people in, at the NYCON meeting, but also to a couple of real estate agents here locally, and, you know, what's happening right now is, uh, the supply is very low. Demand is still pretty high. Uh, maybe not quite as high as it was, but lots of people looking to buy houses and relatively few houses on the market, and so a house comes on the market and folks who are in a position to do it come in and make a, you know, try to make a knockout bid with, with, uh, houses selling at, at what feel like eye-popping numbers. Good in one respect, but highly problematic in another, where then we've now found ourselves in a circumstance where a very significant part of our community could not afford to buy the houses they live in. So it's changing our world in kind of significant ways, uh, and that's a concern. So any effort we make that reduces the potential buildability of a downtown lot, uh, also reduces our potential capacity to respond to whatever mandate comes from the state, or to whatever mandate we might feel for ourselves, increasing, uh, decreasing lot potential, increasing the percentage of affordability, reducing the number of floors available, tweaking some of the things that Susan, uh, represented are all matters that make it less likely that sites will be developed for residential use, which is obviously what some members of our community have sought. So, um, how to navigate that, how to think about it, how to come up with ideas about what to do and how to communicate that in a, in a collaborative way with the folks who are concerned. Any thoughts?
Um. Well, that's a lot.
Yeah. I don't know why you say that. Seems easy, right? I mean, everybody's a little bit right here, right? As is true of almost every issue in the world, right?
Well, as you mentioned, I also was at the NYCON conference, and that definitely gave me a different not, different perspective, a broader perspective on the questions that we're facing, because it definitely you know, it gave me a better appreciation for the context of the housing crisis more broadly, and um, I think one of the things that hit home was, um, what's Lee's last name?
Bell Trauma.
Bell Trauma, right. Um, who, you know,
He's one of the lawyers that works for NYCON.
Who was just a font of information, and I, and I feel like very much sort of on the, like, cutting edge of understanding a lot of these issues. Emphasized around the question of affordability that, so, that basically housing supply was, was the most important factor when you were talking about affordability. Um, and so that was definitely something that, that hit home with me. Um, but also, you know, just trying to think holistically about, um, and this has been kind of a guiding principle for me from the beginning of this moratorium process, think holistically about what we want for Pleasantville going forward, and so this isn't, this is just in a way reiterating what you're saying, but there are a lot of factors that we, that we have to balance here. Um.
Could I, could I ask from the two of you who went to NYCON, what their discussion, well, to the discussion, was there any hope about infrastructure support or significance from the state? Because it from, from where I'm sitting, it feels like we asked them to please patch one stretch, one part of road that they own that run through our village, and we can't even get any support for that. And now we're saying, you're gonna, if you're gonna force us to add ten percent to our population, or whatever it is, with no state support for infrastructure.
So how are, how are we, how are we supposed to do that? As you probably recall, it was a two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty million dollar pool in the governor's budget proposal for these infrastructure improvements, which is, you know, a ridiculously
And I assume, I assume a lot of representatives would go to New York City for
Uh, well, I mean, hard to say how that plays out. I, I can tell you, as you probably already know, um, you know, there are some billions of dollars out there for water infrastructure improvements, and our capacity to access them is by and large uh, lower, because there are many communities with greater need and fewer assets, and so that, uh, makes it hard for us to get money in the Hunger Games grant system. So, um, absolutely legitimate, uh, questions, no doubt. I do not see at the moment, it's not clear where, where this is gonna go next. Uh, but
What do you think about this? So my understanding is that the mayor of White Plains is one of the people who supported an incentive approach to this, which seems like a logical approach to me to take. What do you think, Peter, the likelihood is?
So I mean, that seems like, it would seem likely that both the Senate and the Assembly are more interested in that of them, uh, i- in part, I mean, I think there's several dynamics going on. Obviously, different members of those two houses have different individual opinions, but none of them have a tremendous interest, uh, in, in, uh, infuriating their constituents.
Yeah.
And so for that reason, the incentive option, uh, I think is gonna get more traction. The development community and the housing community and the Regional Plan Association and the Westchester County Association and the Builders Institute and all of the folks that are in that kind of an interesting coalition, all say, history has proven that, uh, incentives are fine, but they don't move the needle in the way New York State needs to move it. So, you know, how that develops, we don't know. I think, further to your answer, there is no confidence at the moment that there's significant money coming from the state that would land in our laps. That said, um, I also think further to Susan's analysis, uh, our, you know, water, sewer, road infrastructure, accepting the big rim condition of, of, uh, that section of, of Mandeville Road is in a position to accept the kind of growth that has been envisioned by our twenty seventeen zoning.
Hmm.
Um, and we're lucky in that respect, because there are a whole lot of places that don't have sewer infrastructure, or it's failing, or don't have water infrastructure, or it's failing, or don't have a source of good water. So I think those, those issues are a little less urgent for us in this thought, but it's, I mean, it's ridiculous to say we want a ten percent increase in, in, in housing units over over a ten-year period, and we have two hundred and fifty million dollars to assist with infrastructure. It's just a joke.
Yeah.
So presumably, that number would change. Our chance to access it is an open question.
We spoke
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Um, we spoke, we've said a lot about affordability now. What we do have control is increasing percentage that we're currently at ten percent, right?
Hmm.
And there have been talks, I think, in New Jersey is fifteen percent across all the state. Now, we have that ability to, whatever we decide to do, to increase that going forward. Um, right? And I think just
We told, we could change it to whatever we wanted.
Yeah. So I, that was something I spoke to the mayor of Hastings and Hudson about, because they have a fifteen percent requirement, and she actually has a chart of all Westchester municipalities, which I, I'm gonna ask her to send me.
I think I have it.
You do have it? Um, one thing that I thought was interesting, although I've talked to Peter about it, and I'm not sure it'd be helpful here, is that some municipalities have a, have a scale that like ranges depending on which part of their municipality you're talking about. Um, I asked her if the fifteen percent had a cooling effect on development, and she said she thinks, thought that it did to some degree. Um, so I'm also interested in that possibility, but I feel like we would need to know a little bit more, um, before we made that decision. You know, um, for certain, and, and like and I, I guess, I, I'm certainly interested in the question of affordability. I feel like there are different ways to address that issue, and that's one of them, but that's not necessarily the, the only approach that would have an impact on that.
A, a, a few things to add to that. Um, there was a very interesting case study of a project with an impelum. Were you with that session, or was that one I went to, or you went to? So Chance Mullin was the mayor of Pelham, and, and the developer who did this project, uh, were both on a panel. And it's quite an interesting project, but the developer who, who by all reports, you know, is a good guy, done lots of good stuff, and is doing this good project in Pelham, uh, basically said that the analysis is pretty easy to understand, uh, in most cases. Uh in most cases, if you say. You can have more units, that makes it more likely that a building can be created. Uh if you have fewer units, that makes it less likely. If you have more affordable units. Uh that makes it less likely that the project can be built unless there are benefits of some other sort. And one interesting piece is that by his report and and I've I've had this conversation in other ways too. Uh there is money out there for developers for affordable housing at a low income level. Because there's federal money feeding into that to try to address that need. Uh there is very little money uh next to no money to defray the cost of. Uh housing affordable for a a a very middle class uh kind of uh economic range. So most of the counties' affordable housing requirements, ours included, aim at eighty percent of the average median income. And that is a number that's changed every year based on HUD numbers for Westchester County. And you know, by by standards somewhere else in the state and certainly some other places in the country, these are. Like eye popping numbers, right? Uh although for a single person with an apartment, eighty percent of the AMI, you know, it starts to become. Uh a a way more affordable option uh than a market rate apartment, which at the moment, you know, I can speak for my. I own offspring in this regard. Uh it it takes a, just at the moment, a crazy high income. Uh to to imagine an apartment that you don't share with someone. So there's that piece of it. So but essentially, this guy in was pretty clear in his presentation, they said, okay, here here is this project in. In Pelham. Uh for in exchange for a benefit that was provided to build Pelham a new building that incorporates their police station and village. Offices, Pelham gave them. Property to build an income reducing apartment building on, which is, I think, four stories. Uh but you know, in that sense, he said, okay, you know, I have my spreadsheet. If I can get. A subsidy for affordable housing or a payment in lieu of taxes that reduces my property taxes. Or if I can get free land. Or if you give me a bonus that allows me to build more apartments. I can rent those apartments cheaper. If I get none of those things. I rent that the rent goes higher. So every one of those valves that you adjust. Can potentially bring the rent up or down. Then, you know, he he. Was presenting the view of someone who was. Uh had had presented a very open book to the village of Pelham in part because of the deep interrelationship the two of them entered into. Uh with Pelham giving him land to build on in exchange for him building some additional Pelham, in addition to all these other benefits. In a situation where it's private property like these soft sites that are under discussion, uh we don't have any of those tools. The tools that are out there to uh increase or decrease the likelihood of doing it that are in our control are the zoning. Or the willingness on our part, so far no willingness. And and I'm not recommending us to change that to provide a tax abatement for these projects. But those are the ways that you can create apartments with more affordability and still get them built. If you simply require more affordability with no other benefits. Especially if you reduce the number of units on a given piece of land. All of those things are heading in the direction of not seeing housing in those locations. Again, which is in the view of some, what we are doing, right? I mean, there's certain people who are saying to us.
I have some thoughts about this, all of this.
Yes.
Um I think a a group of well meaning people put a lot of pressure on the board. To pause development and to look at uh essentially the collective wisdom of. Several um. Uh master plans for the village and the and the long term effects of that. And then also incidentally. You know, the um the pandemic and some of the changes that that's wrought. And I think it was well meaning. I think we've learned something. I I do think we've actually learned that we're well well positioned for the future in that. You know, even under the second version of the analysis that was much more conservative than the first. We're adding something like fifty kids to a school that is a hundred kids under its peak.
Two hundred fifty kids under its peak.
Two hundred fifty kids, yeah, under its historical peak. So there there, you know, the there's no issues with water, there's no issues with with uh power delivery, et cetera, et cetera. I do think, however, that um in doing this. Uh we've ignored the real crisis. Um and it concerns me that the way that we talk about housing affordability is that it's an external crisis. That the state, you know, is foisting upon us or is that, you know, sort of a general vague national crisis. And I would suggest. That it's actually a local crisis. And that the people who are concerned about keeping Pleasantville the place that it was when they grew up. Should be much more concerned about housing affordability. As a factor in changing the character of the village over time than about. The density of the downtown area or about any number of these other issues, because the reality is. If you are not an investment banker, you know, with the ability to spend a million plus dollars. And then spend another thirty five hundred dollars a month. Your parent is not going to be living in the village. Your child, when they have left the house, will not be living in the village. We don't have a way to to have people who work in the village live in the village. And we know from lots of experience. That you you start that cycle. And you increase traffic, you increase uh a cost of labor. It's it's an inflationary cycle that will only drive up the cost of our property and and won't solve anything. So I think. This really genuinely deeply is a crisis. And we need to transition from the backward view of wow, there are going to be a lot more people walking. Around the village center. And assume a forward view and say, how how on earth do we actually functionally get? More genuinely middle class affordable units into the village. And it may be, Nicole sent around a wonderful article from the Washington Post today, talking about standalone accessory dwellings. Um and it may be looking at that. Um there's, you know, there's in in the. Community of parking enthusiasts, there's there's some evidence that suggests in California and other places, they actually look at reducing. The parking requirements for apartments particularly connected to, that's another academic benefit that you can provide. Is say, look, if you're gonna provide housing within a certain affordability range, then you don't have to get the parking with that. Um and you may attract the people who will actually be commuting or working locally for for whom that makes sense. There's. It it's a, all I'm saying is it's a complex organism. And by being sort of focused on the past in this this. Understandable but misguided attempt to recreate it, we're ignoring the future that we're actually headed into. And and while, you know, I I certainly support looking at the difference between a ten and a fifteen percent. Affordable housing uh requirement. We're talking about four, five, six, seven apartments over the next ten years being built in Pleasantville. It's not going to change anything. Um and I I really think we we ought to start thinking about.
Quite quite a bit more than that.
Well, I mean, whatever the number is. Uh I I'm saying it wouldn't necessarily in itself change the basic affordability of living. This distance from New York City in a village like Pleasantville. So we individually and collectively have to think about more serious solutions to the problem instead of writing about, you know. People who don't look like us living near us.
Although my my old, my response to the the end of that is just in about. So how much of a role does the village of Pleasantville, one point seven square miles have? In in a housing crisis of a county that's as big as ours and where we're pretty well built out. So I guess my question would be about what heights are you willing to build because we're, we don't have much land left.
What if we let people build individual uh uh. Accessory dwelling units in their backyards.
Yeah, so ADUs on their on the property there, yeah. So like like Senator Harkins proposals, those kinds of things.
So I mean, there there are many different variants of that. We have an accessory dwelling code that's existed for a very long time and has been very rarely used. One of the reasons it's very rarely used is that it is uh uh. Expensive to generate an accessory unit that is code compliant, right? But the fire code compliant, building code compliant. And so obviously every community has illegal accessory apartments in various places. Very few legal accessory apartments because it's a costly venture. Uh and in some cases, a nearly impossible venture. You got firewall issues, egress issues, you know, all that kind of stuff. So there's that issue. What isn't uh uh permitted at the moment is the capacity to build a small house right or backyard. So and that is at further to the article Nicole sent. Generally done as a, it seems in California, people of means who have the means to build a rental house. Sometimes renting the big house and living in a small one or vice versa. A means that people who have enough money to do that can build a rental unit. And then there's. Uh there've been various variants of, I think, Harkins has been uh promoting, including state subsidies to allow that to happen. That would be, that would entail a requirement that it be affordable under certain circumstances. So.
But even even, so even if you allow, you know, like essentially a enlarged shed that's code compliant and everything in the backyard. Um even if you're you're a wealthy person and your grandmother lives there. Um that takes the space that your grandmother was living in and makes it available to someone else.
I I get that. Uh I I'm not arguing that there is an ability to it. And certainly California has made these things legal everywhere. It's generating both some good stuff and some huge conflict. I I can tell you, as you likely know, in my years. On the planning commission and then on the village board, um. There is quite a bit of conflict among neighbors about a a uh. Uh a change that causes a neighbor to suddenly be living next to something they didn't expect. Like, for example, an existing garage that someone converts into a habitable space. And is, you know, right next to your house. And it it uh was a different matter of concern when you were living next door garage versus living next to. An a new heated four season enterprise. Whatever that person is using for sometimes a media room, sometimes an exercise room, sometimes an office, whatever. My team. So all those things obviously are in play. We we uh but I can also say the trouble with. Uh our environment is. And and we've seen it with new development. A lot of the new opportunities we create, create opportunities to people who already have quite a bit of money. And the result of that is uh we may in the end be creating. Opportunities for more people who have a whole lot of money. Again, is that a bad thing? It it's not itself a bad thing, but it's not moving the needle.
I understand what you're saying, but that's not. A to s- to say that, of course, if there's more uh. Places for people to live in the village, even if they're affordable. It is quite likely that the people who own those will be capitalists of some sort and will be making money for that, for sure. But I think the question is, can you drive down the average cost for renting something by increasing the supply? Um and I think you shouldn't be so worried about, i- if you can do that. Then the question of who's getting, you know, the the. The the income is less of an issue because you're creating a virtuous cycle instead of a.
Well, and in the end, you know, obviously there, the the current system for affordability. Is in essence a public and private subsidy that i- i- in my mind has a rather uncertain. Long term future. That is to say, in the case of ownership units built up under an affordability uh rule. Those are actually achieving a very significant result and fast, albeit not very many units, because those units are saying it. Selling at a fraction of similar units. And those are units that the family that buys them can live in forever. But when they sell them, there's a deed restriction. That means that closing that same affordability in whatever the dollars are that. Time will be respected. In the case of affordable units in rental housing. It is clear to me that in thirty years, uh everybody will be following the rules. And maybe that'll evolve. I'm not saying that can't be solved and the county has a piece of it and all of that.
Yeah, I'm just saying like it's very easy to imagine a situation where we can talk ourselves out of any change to zoning. Any change that allows more uh uh housing to be built. That can be economically provided at an affordable level or that increases its supply. Enough to affect the the costs, right? Um and we will back ourselves into the situation where. None of us, when we're retired, will be able to live here. None of our children will be able to live here. You know, uh that an entirely different class and sort of people will live in an entirely different place than we live in.
So. I I I I don't argue about that. Um I've lived here, I moved here in nineteen eighty six. Uh I've seen a whole lot of changes and we are in a a very. Different environment than we were in nineteen eighty six. A lot of things remain true, but uh the cost of housing. Uh has gone up very substantially and the taxes have gone up. Even more substantially uh o- over the period of time that I've lived here. That said, not everybody agrees and not everybody will agree. And that's to be respected because everyone's a little bit right, which is to say. I moved to this house because I wanted uh a backyard. And I wanted the relative quietude of a place like Pleasantville, for example, if I moved from a city, whatever. And and those folks say, you know, I bought this and scraped together and two working. Partners spent ten years struggling to make it happen. Now they're starting to. Feel like it's comfortable and they're here for the long haul and. If you come in and say, well, you're gonna start allowing somebody to tear down their house and build a three story apartment building, whatever, which was. Permitted in what Kathy Volco proposed. I mean, we would have been in a circumstance where. A bunch of single family homes on a lot on a street that's been essentially the same for a hundred and twenty five years. Could have been torn down and a significant apartment building built.
Well, and I'm suggesting that if we collectively don't do something about it ourselves, we will end up in that situation sooner or later.
Well, and 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 the point I would make. As a counterpoint, which is to say, e- everybody's right about, I don't think anybody on any side of this argument. Or very few people have ever said anything that's not true. It's just that it's the collision of life, the catch twenty two. So for example, what I would say on our behalf is when you look at. The housing units added to the village of Pleasantville. Uh in the last seven, eight years, starting with Toll Brothers. Toll Brothers, third nine Washington, ninety eight Washington, if please God, uh it it finally gets occupied. The David Mann project that de pugh this soon to be occupied project that's serving memorial. Uh and the potential project that four forty four Bedford Road. Again, that felt like to a lot of people in the community, too much, too fast. This straw that broke the camel breaks the camel's back. But even even if that were not to happen. The number of housing units we've added has been in shouting distance of a ten percent increase in housing units. Ten percent increase in housing units is what the state has identified as the gap we have statewide. So. I I think everything you said viewed from a narrow lens is completely true. And yet, in the context of trying to find a way to see. Community progress in all the categories we might imagine, yet. Economic progress, ecological progress, social progress, you know, all of the factors we might imagine. At the same time to try to keep the virtues of the place that uh uh we hold dearest. Um i- involves incremental change and to this community's credit. We've done that in a very significant way.
Sure.
And so the question is, as as some have. And so the question is, as as some have said to us, okay, done, stop. Or are we partway through that process? And and I add to that, not just the question of social economics and housing gaps and all of that, but. What will make a vibrant community ten and twenty and thirty years hence? And and one thing that we know, and I have been around long enough to see, is. Is this very significant shift nationally, but certainly locally in an interest in rental housing. Uh as compared to ownership housing because of people more transient, because of people moving through phases of life. Because, interestingly, the cost of ownership housing and the taxes attached to it, even if you pay off a thirty year mortgage. Are high enough that even what seem like eye popping rents aren't such a bad deal.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, and and all I'm saying, sorry, Nicole. Uh I I'm not saying obviously, obviously. Nothing extreme can be done at the village level unless it's imposed from above. We our deliberative process would never end up with something so crazily absurdly extreme. Because we'd all get voted out and, you know.
And that's.
And that's fine.
That's that's actually a good thing.
Let me finish. So what I'm saying, however, is that we've we've spent a good deal of time now. We'll we'll have spent six months by the time that we're done, looking in the rearview mirror to see if the decisions we made. In the last number of years were the right ones or not. And all I'm saying is we need to turn and start to spend an equivalent amount of effort. Looking through the forefront window of the car to see what we're about to hit.
Really that what the B F J study mostly does?
No, well, I think that, no, I don't. Actually, that's not what the B F J study does. The B F J study says. If we keep our zoning laws as they are today, what will the impact of that be?
Yes.
It is not about looking towards the future and saying, we still have a crisis, even if we do what we're doing today. And and that continues forward. It w- it will still be a crisis. So for for instance, one small example is, yeah, absolutely. If we allowed everybody in Pleasantville to build a a freestanding accessory dwelling unit in their backyard. There would be chaos and a lot of people, especially in very, very small lots, would be very upset. But if people who are in walking distance of the village who had an acre or more. Or, you know, or some of the very large backyards that do exist, were able to put a unit back there. You could get twenty, thirty, forty units, and that in a village's size actually is significant. And those would be relatively inexpensive if they were rented out or again, if. If they're to relatives or whatever, they're taking the cost out of somewhere else. So it would have an effect on our local market. I'm just saying, something like that could make a difference.
Well, so, I mean, part of that question further, you know, moving i- i- or relating to the conversation, how to engage the community. We have a community of folks, the folks who have been vocal, and you. Uh pointed out that the folks who are vocal and uh and and opposed to this development. Don't represent the folks who are in favor of it, or the folks who haven't yet weighed in or who don't have an opinion, but. It would be difficult, I think, in the category of participatory democracy to come out of a moratorium and say. Not only are we not going to change what we have, but we're gonna add some things that increase development.
I think that we should look at the things that we can do to make more. It it the moment you say increase development, increase traffic, of course, everybody will be against it. But everybody wants their children to be able to live in the village if their children should choose to do that. And not everybody can afford to pay for them to live here or have them live in the house. Everybody would like their parents to live near them. Well, not everybody. Many people would like their parents to be able to live with them. A lot of people can't have them live. I'm saying, like, if you think of it in those ways and we take.
So ca- can I suggest that we walk the conversation back a little bit? I mean, I think that the what you're suggesting is is um. Thought provoking and interesting and a conversation worth having. Um but. We're we're talking specifically now about the moratorium on the A one district and the B F J um analysis. I'd like to start by saying for my part that I um found the. That I stand by the results of the B F J analysis. They seem uh very well worked through and um. Conservative meaning that the it's the sort of on the more extreme end. Has the potential to be developed on these um soft build out sites. So. I I just want to sort of have it on the record that um I think that this is a um. A fair and well researched um prediction of the possibility of um the current zoning. So just. That stated, um so.
Do we all agree with that? Yeah, I agree.
I thought it seemed, I I agree. I thought it seemed fair. Once once I kind of went case by case of each soft site and really thought about, especially the parking. Aspects. What what I learned was, you always say, what it takes to have it parked.
Yeah, yeah.
When I really yeah went through each one, I was I was persuaded, although at first, when I wasn't thinking in that way. You know, it seemed low, but.
No, no, I was just gonna say, I feel like it's important to start with that. It's like step one of our response, that we think that this is a fair. So I think it, you know, if if we accept this. We have to agree that the current zoning is not going to put an undue burden on the existing infrastructure. Or the schools and so on. Um so then, if that's the case, then then we have to ask other questions. Like, which.
I- in addition to that, it will have a positive effect on the tax base.
Yes.
And and mitigate increases to some degree because we have more payers.
Yes, thanks for adding that. So so I think that that's like the information that we're starting from, right? And I think it's important to 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 state that. Um so then. When we think about whether we should do something to change the zoning in the A one district from what it currently is. We have to pose another set of questions like. Are are, you know, is the most recent master plan um consistent with our values? And our goals for the future of Pleasantville? Um or is it in some way inconsistent? And if so, why? I mean, just to put it in the broadest possible terms, right? Um. So um. You know, I mean, obviously, there are a number, there are, you know, many different ways that we can look at that and um. I'm sorry, I'm like, I'm like, wanna put, give the ball to somebody else now. No, I mean, so I I think, you know, there are, so we've been talking about affordability of housing. Um, you know, I think in the simplest terms, you know, seriously restricting development is probably gonna have. A a negative impact on the affordability of housing. So that may be one thing to consider. Um another, so I'll just put some things on the list and I would encourage others to add other things to the list. Um a another, a big issue for me is the question of vibrancy of the downtown. And I will mention parenthetically that one of the panels that um I was on at the N I C O M conference was about supporting retail. And I came away with some really interesting ideas. So that's something that I want to work on and I'll talk to you about that too. Um so but the vibrancy of the downtown, and I think that there's a lot of research indicating that having this. Um multipurpose buildings that have, you know, mixed retail and and housing and so on. Having more foot traffic and so on um is beneficial for supporting local businesses, for supporting vibrancy of the downtown. Now, one could say, you know, at what point does it become too much and so on, but that I feel like is a factor to consider. Um, you know, and then there are other issues that people have raised, like, you know, the the. The feel of the downtown. One consideration for me is an environmental issue of like, if we do have development. Where do we want that development to be and what do we want it to look like? So I personally would rather see. Slightly more concentrated development in the downtown than having more townhouses on areas that are not currently developed. Um so that's one thing that kind of factors into my own equations. And actually, this analysis is interesting in that respect because. Um where you see the greatest potential impact of of traffic um. Uh and there was one other impact I'm trying to think is. It is, for instance, i- if the. The former, is it the former Bank of New York property? There are a couple of other, right, bigger properties.
But out there.
Right, so it's interesting to see the tho- those kinds of developments have a much bigger impact. Um on on traffic. So that's a factor that, you know, I consider in in my decision making process. So now I'll pass it on to you guys. Were are there other like, you know, considerations that we should put on the list? Like, I'm not sure we're quite at a point of arriving in a conclusion anyway, so. I feel like what we need to do right now is to think of like, what are all the factors that we need to be considering? Uh, you know, putting together as we try and figure out the right balance and try and think of um what the most appropriate decision is.
Well, so that, thank you, Nicole. I'm taking notes here. So you you provided a list of possible tools. Um but Peter, you had provided a list kind of earlier that had some overlap. Um as did David, so I feel like we've got a good set of things to think with. Um. The the A D U's are not as much in A one, right, David, or the in the in the A one district? As a discussion point, so while while that's important, I it might not be with.
And there are a couple of different flavors of A D U legislation floating around Albany in committee right now as well, so. Which again, would come down upon us as opposed to.
But something I heard you saying at the end there, Nicole, was a sensitivity to gradations in building dense. Human density and building height as you approach the village center, right? So to to kind of think about. Uh to think about that very carefully and the preservation of green space. Um out outside of the 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 village core. That seems like something that um that was well articulated and Gavin talked about that.
And the creation of green space inside the village core.
Right.
Yes, agreed.
So one interesting piece worth thinking about is the project that was built on Washington at the corner of Edgewood. How many is that? Twenty units?
Yeah.
Something like that. That is the end of the A one district and it abuts residential.
Yeah.
Districts. Um and a lot of folks who don't like what they perceive as things, uh uh architecture that's too modern, like that.
Right.
Because it.
Or don't even see it.
Yeah, it appears more quote traditional. I mean. The the building on Washington at the corner. Uh firehouse, insurance company, and then this thing on the corner. By the way, it's it's um. You know, sort of more standard suburban downtowny sort of construction. Uh and um and uh. The interesting piece is that literally abuts, it's three stories, it literally abuts the residential street. Edgewood, obviously, a very nice street. Um and so I I don't think we have that our current zoning is failing at. That sort of sense of march of density and and height at the moment. And it, I mean, it's, of course, the former Chase Bank building is five stories, preexisting, nonconforming. And, you know, it's always been there, and so it's been there throughout the lifetimes of everyone alive today. And so it's just kind of a a given. Um and yet, it's also clear that if that were. A two story building right now and someone proposed to build a five story building, even in a historic. Architectural idiom, it would be a source of great controversy. So um it will also, you know, some of that, I think, is is true. In people's perception of what the world looks like is is uh jolted by change. And then. Fairly soon or at some point, it becomes kind of the standard. Just for example, I was thinking the other day as I was walking home. About the very large trees that I know existed in some places that have been lost and. And have never been replaced and uh uh and and some that were lost and were replaced. And um. Even I, I recall some great pain when a tree was lost in a location on Bedford Road and then has never been replaced. And I'm like, really, come on, we need to do something. That was on private property. Um but. It's almost hard to remember what it looked like and the scene is fine. It looks like a leafy area and all that, so. I I just bring that up as an example of. Part of the struggle we have with 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 uh all of this is. And and we're all subject to it in our own lives in various ways. The idea that things are changing around us and we're not sure how it's gonna work out. And the painful recognition that we all have because we live with this zoning thing is that. Um it's not like we can fine tune the world to match our expectations. The world is constantly changing around us. And honestly, a lot of what we've seen, including uh some of these recent developments, could have happened a long time ago, but they didn't. Because nobody wanted to, whatever it might be, you know, the thirty nine Washington where Tri- and I was. Uh was the site of a much loved toy store. The guy's ready to hang up his spurs. He left with time left on the lease. The owner of the property is well up in years. He's looking to transition. All of those things mean something's gonna change and when it changes, stuff happens. So. I do think. That amid all the very valid arguments about housing affordability. And and our important role in trying to navigate that. Our capacity to do that is very limited. And we're in an environment now where many of our homeowners have experienced the biggest increase in their personal wealth. Over the last couple of years that uh that they they. I was gonna say, we'll ever see in a short period of time. Obviously, some people may make a whole lot of money, but. Um it is difficult at the same time as people. Want a community that hearkens back to the old times. Uh and want a community where their kids or their in-laws can live here. They're also not sorry that their house is worth two hundred thousand dollars more than it was a little while back. And they're not gonna sell it for what it might have been worth in a less vibrant community. They're gonna sell it for what it's worth, right?
Well, yeah, except if you plan to be here for twenty plus years, the only effect of your house increasing by that amount. Is eventually the taxes will catch up with you. The people who are moving in have different expectations for services. Create a different peer norm for your children in terms of like birthday parties. You just increase the cost of your living. So it's not really.
I'm not saying it's unadversely positive. I will say, I get a lot of that, you know. The people moving in are entitled and, you know, all of that. Honestly, they've been entitled people since time began, living in all kinds of ways. It's a process. I don't think that the kinds of folks who have been typically attracted to these uh places in Pleasantville have. Have been all that much different from the the ones that were attracted when I was young. Uh and and that pleases me, but. You know, somebody said to me the other day. Uh. I'm gonna hang around because maybe my kids. Will want the house or, you know, they'll get married, whatever, they'll buy the house from me or or I'll give them the mortgage. At a very favorable rate because all I need is enough, you know, with social security and whatever retirement monies I have. If they're sort of paying a mortgage to me, they can live in the house. So, you know, again, people start to think that way in ways they didn't at one point in time, and that's up to everybody.
It's not, but it's, I I agree with a lot of what you're saying, but the one thing that's changed is it's not the same for our kids' generation as it was for us. I could rent an apartment in almost any place in the country when I came out of school with a good job. And I had the prospects to buy a house. I don't think that most kids right now, giving the house in the market that they're. Looking at in most, around most of the major cities in the country can ever dream of buying a house now.
Well, it may not be a realistic goal in the future either.
We can't solve that problem.
No, we can't solve any problem, but we can contribute to the solve. No, no, I'm saying, we can't solve any of these societal issues.
Yes.
But if we if we say, because we can't solve it, we can't be part of the solution and we're not gonna do anything, that's. That's that's relinquishing our our role.
No, I I hear what you're saying, but what what I what I hear in Peter saying we can't solve it is that. There are places with much more buildable land than Pleasantville, New York. That that that's what I hear.
Issues than we have.
Like what?
I mean, we have more wealth, we have more. I mean, we have more wealth, we have more.
I'm saying, there are places that are a mile plus. You know, the um, anyways, significant quality of buildable, significant quantity of buildable land, but so it it is, we, there are, there are limits to what we can do without going up.
So without going up.
Without going up.
Oh, well, there's of course there are limits.
Where, yeah, and so.
But I don't think we can approach those limits, you know.
All right, okay, so we're just thinking in percentages, like ten percent over, what is it, ten percent over eight years is pretty impressive for a place that's not very big.
Yeah, it is pretty impressive.
It's it's historic for for us.
So, but so I I I guess the discussion I would like firstly to have is about can, what what percent, what do we comfortable with continuing in those thinking in percentages, you know? Like, what what do we think are good targets for?
I mean, I guess like, if you choose a timeframe, you can always find a statistical argument that works. Let's talk about the village over the last fifty years.
But people didn't wanna live as far from New York City in the in the quantities they do now because of the tech economy and all the shit and workforce.
Think that if you look, you'll find that fewer people commute to New York today than did fifty years ago.
I'm not sure if that's true, but I mean, the whole change in Zoom, to our time, whatever. I mean, I can tell you, I I uh I lived in Irvington at the time, but it used to be in the eighties that the trains got to North White Plains and then they had to stop because it wasn't electrified north of North White Plains, and they, at the North White Plains yard, switched to a diesel locomotive that pulled the trains are out of the way. When they electrified all the way to Brewster North, which occurred in the later eighties, it knocked quite a bit of time off the commute.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that was one of the factors in addition to people's willingness to spend more time commuting, uh that that started to 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 make the the range of acceptable commuting distances uh go wider. So there was that piece of it. And interestingly, even at times when I, uh, the census is quite clear, uh, we've never been a community with a majority of the workforce commuting to the city. There's always been a significant.
Yeah, so it's been like, it's only thirty percent.
It's never been a, you know, quote bedroom community in the ways that some would assume it to be. And, you know, who knows what the relationship to New York City will look like in five or ten or thirty years? Obviously, you know, there's all this conversation about the 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 crisis and office investment and, you know, all that kind of stuff.
Hmm.
So, but but what I am saying though is that practically speaking, forget about our responsibility to the world or to the metropolitan area or to the state or anything like that. I think Pleasantville would be a better place if we created a path for our own children to be renters here. For our parents to have places that they could afford on some reasonable amount of in income to afford. And we won't get there overnight. It may take twenty years to get there, but building the path, I think, is important.
Okay, so if that were established as a goal, it certainly has a has a dream goal, it's it's I s- I agree with you, but how would you propose to achieve that?
Well, a third of Pleasantville is renters already, right?
Not necessarily, uh, uh, give or take a third are apartment dwellers. Some percentage of those are ownership units.
Okay, so a third of Pleasantville is apartment dwellers already. A lot of that stock is pretty, I don't wanna say decrepit, but it's it's aging. I think that that'd be fair to say, right?
Some of it.
Uh, some of it is legal, some of it is not legal.
The majority is legal, but certainly some is illegal.
Um, I I I think that over time, gradually increasing the density of the urban area of the 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 downtown walkable area of Pleasantville, not adding more townhouses, uh but looking at ways of um adding accessory units or whatever in the walkable area, that's the thing to do.
Okay, so then that argument would say, we certainly should keep the zoning the way it is.
Mm-hmm.
Or you might argue in that scenario, to create more development potential in the zone, right?
Over time, yeah.
Okay, so that.
But I I would, I would not to, again, do that immediately, but I I do think we need to, like, what we should be telling B B F J. Honestly, we haven't created any evidence to say that we need to make our zoning more restricted. Everything that I've read suggests it's working, it's having the intended effect, it's not straining the schools, it's not straining the infrastructure, anything like that.
Oh, oh, that's true.
Coming out of this.
But in the view of some, it, the the folks who feel otherwise um are responding to what they feel are valid concerns, whether the look of things, the feel of things, whatever.
And we took six months and we've spent a bunch of money on on a report to analytically look at that to see if that is in fact true. And not their feelings, but, you know, the the things that they thought were going to have an effect. And then we did an even more conservative version of that report, and they both showed the same thing. So if we if we want to make any um, if we wanna take any actions based on that, they would be contrary to evidence. And they would be assuming that those people represent a much larger number of people in the village that we don't actually know. Um, so what I'm saying is that, what I do think is that we ought to look at how the village should develop, because because basically we're still taking, what was it, a two thousand five and two thousand seventeen master plan? I don't know when the first version was created.
I mean, there there's been a master, the.
No, I mean, that the first version that talked about, you know, increased urban density and all that.
I mean, there was a nineteen ninety-five core master plan, and we are updated in twenty seventeen.
Okay, so nineteen ninety-five and twenty seventeen.
I mean, there's some stuff in between.
I mean, I think we should.
Memorial Avenue or a few different things.
We should actually be looking at the next master plan rather than looking back at the last one.
So let me just say, first off, everybody should dig into the twenty seventeen plan. It's on the website. It's, you know, a hundred and ninety-eight pages or some such thing, you don't have to read it all, but um, you know, I think, I I I I, of course, the only one of the five of us that was involved in that, but I think that what we have seen uh ratifies what that plan said. And um i- it is an interesting question. Uh, some folks expressed concerns about very specific things. Some folks, a lot of what we heard was concern about traffic, right?
Mm-hmm.
And it certainly, especially at that point, traffic totally sucked, right? A a lot of concern about pickup and drop-off at the schools, uh, which is not obviously significantly affected here by any of this development, because we have fewer kids than we used to have.
Hmm.
But at some point, we could have more. And, you know, I talked to somebody who said, okay, you tell me there were more kids in two thousand nine, you know, two hundred and some more kids than there were now. I don't want two hundred and nine more kids, fifty more kids. I don't want that ever to happen again. I mean, the interesting piece, which I pointed out, is that that peak in two thousand nine was completely unrelated to new housing units, because there weren't any. It was the ebb and flow of the way.
Right.
The birth rate and and our popularity as a community.
But specifically that, I guess all I'm saying is, we've spent the, we, by the time we're done, we'll have spent six months addressing the concerns of the people who say the thing to be worried about is too many kids in the school. But looking forward and looking around the country and around the county, the thing we should be worried about is two hundred fewer kids in our schools and the effects of that on our overall economy and on the livability of the village. Because because fewer kids in the schools is the bigger problem going forward that most of our neighbors are gonna be facing.
Well, some of them are facing it now, although some would resent that not so much as a problem, but as something that mitigates high school taxes because it means fewer teachers, all that kind of thing. I mean, look, you look at the last ten years in Pleasantville and our our uh school enrollment is about as stable as you could imagine. It doesn't get much better than this in the real world, unless you control people's uh personal lives. It it's just, it doesn't get much better than this, which isn't to say that it isn't gonna go up or down at some point. It is, but it would appear with a decade of history here that w- w- the balance is pretty good.
It was established about fifty thousand times that having too many children in the school district is not an issue with respect to the zoning and.
Right, right, so.
So could I, could I, uh, there's one aspect that I have heard from uh quite a few people that hasn't come up yet, at least tonight, and it's the thorny issue of of aesthetics. And I think our, from my my discussions with all of you, I feel like we're not interested in legislating aesthetics.
No.
And and changing anything that we're doing with with architectural review suggestions.
Always very biased that way.
Right, because of all the challenges of 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 drafting language that is not simply just putting it in high of the beholder anyway, right?
Yeah.
Um, so, so let's say that's true, that we don't, we we don't think we can change anything there. I still wanna respond to a concern of people feeling surrounded by buildings.
Mm-hmm.
And I put it that way just because, to put that way to me more than once, that when when Seventy Memorial go, went up, and then when they proposed, uh other building to propose that were going up, with people feeling a sense that, okay, I'm gonna wait, walking down the sidewalks in the village center and be surrounded by built built environment, right? And they they thought, well, I I I moved here because I was tired of being surrounded by a built environment. A lot of, a lot of people did. So I would just like to think a bit about, I just like to think more about that as one of our bullet points.
Which is partly, which leads to your view.
Yeah, the the thinking about views, thinking about the interaction between the built environment and the natural environment. Um, you know, within the village centers, so uh now is probably not the time as we're all uh fighting asleep here, but at some point.
You're talking.
Uh, yeah, I'm.
He's, he had trouble to.
The ship has sailed, yeah.
I like the idea.
But I'd like to talk about at some point.
Yeah.
If we're gonna do another one of these.
Clearly, we need to.
About.
We need to.
One of the things that we were spitballing about is the idea of having like staggered heights on Memorial Plaza.
Right.
Just because it, because that could be really pretty too, like particularly if you have terraces and.
Totally, and I mean that.
I think sometimes it's nice to think about, not like, do I want something, do I not want something? But like, what would an ideal scenario be, like, and to actually think in images, you know?
Right.
Um.
Yeah, I mean, I've thought about, thought about that as well, even like a viewing.
Yeah.
But uh some way to, yeah, some way to maintain a view of the landscape horizon even as we um have more density going going in.
All valid, I mean, again, it's it's it's, which which valve do we open and which valve we close? If you say, you have to have setbacks, I told this to Cole, there's a legendary series of drawings by Raymond Hood at the time of the New York City zoning code that established setbacks on tall buildings as skyscrapers were starting to become available. Um, but again, it it, you require setbacks on a given floor plate. You reduce the number of whatever it is you're trying to build and you increase the rents.
And that's, you know, and in um, so I I thought about this a lot because of my origins in Denver, Colorado, and Denver has a very detailed, longstanding um view, view district zoning policy from all their city parks. Where there's, you can go online, look at all their maps, and it's like block by block, you can build at this height from this distance.
So you can still see the Rockies.
Yeah, and yeah, see the Rockies and also just see the sky, you know, so that you don't, that if you're in a city park in the civic, that you don't, that you're not just looking at at buildings. And um, you know, in in the future civic space, I think would be a a prime place to think about that interaction with the with your own landscape, so. Doesn't, again, um, we're we're all kind of kind of personate, but.
All right, so we gotta go to a quick executive session, but maybe we've got enough things going. I do wonder if we need a separate work session just on these subjects, because it's hard to have enough time. And one of the things we have to.
Huh?
The next work session to this and the uh.
What party was that?
And one of the things we have to get to is having engaged the community more broadly.
Yeah.
In this, right?
It would be great to engage in maybe more broadly, period.
Well, but again, same story. I mean, we can, we can send out something. Inevitably, it's like every subject, you have a whole bunch of people who feel strongly about something, whether it's pro or con, and a whole bunch of people who are just not engaged. Either they think it's fine either way, or it's just not their thing. Um, and, you know, in this case, what we've seen, and we've gotten some reports from folks who've said, you know, I like what's going on. Uh, but for the most part, if you like what's going on, you know, and come out to the high school.
I've say like, uh, to to credit Abby, some of uh.
Who's still among us, are you there?
Some of the reporting um on this has actually generated people's interest, and I've had a couple of different people approach me and be sort of upset about the tone of some of the conversations, those and feeling that it represents a lot of people they know, so. There's definitely more than one set of views here.
And and honestly, I think in every, in every, these views are a continuum. It isn't like you got one view or another. All these issues are all interrelated. And in the end, some piece of it reflects all of our inability to manage the future i- at the level that would make it feel really comfortable, right?
And and we're and we're living through so many changes in the village center that we, no one, including us, can really see what it will feel like to live here when it's, when these buildings are done, and when the plaza is done, and when Manville's done, right?
Yeah, I mean, I will say.
There's trepidation on the part of a lot of people, just of the unknown, what will it feel like to live here?
I mean, I would say I'm I'm getting, flack isn't quite the right word, but, you know, questioning commentary about what people see going on on Manville Road and bumping out. What about cars? And it's squeezed off too much. One guy wrote me an extended email about, you know, that that this was beyond the wrong thing to do. Um. This so far has declined by two offers to meet him. But but um I, I mean, go down and look, and and perhaps you have already, at the, what's taking shape now on Memorial Plaza. Take a look behind the fence. Within a week or two, we're gonna have that fence down in front of Seventy Memorial. And remember what that scene was, when, you know, uh, the the streetscape is, me speaking, dramatically improved.
And what I meant, I I'm there every day. I look at it every day. My kids are annoyed, because I'm like, let's go look at the sidewalk.
Yeah.
See that?
Why are we just seeing you doing those?
Yeah, yeah.
Story of my life. Utah, Montana.
Right, yeah, but but I guess what I meant was, what what will it feel like? I mean, where they're all inhabited.
I get it.
You know, and and the retail inhabited and.
I'm ready to go out there and say, I think it's gonna be great, like particularly, but like, but I do think it is incumbent upon us to do other things too. Like, I think there are things we can do to support retail, to support businesses. I think building the civic space is.
Programming it out.
And programming that.
Yeah.
Um, but I think if we do all of those things, I think the the center, the downtown, is gonna feel more cohesive.
Yes.
Um, less splintered and.
Which Manville is one piece of that right now.
And I think it will be lively, you know, I I think it's gonna be really great. I I think it's important to say that, you know.
And there there's some, you know, New Jersey towns, I think in particular, that have town greens that I've spent time in.
Yeah.
That really have a different feeling because everybody comes and gets together, not just for the music festival or whatever, but for for free things that are right in the center of everything, and that's sort of like a nice feeling, I think, that we.
Yeah, so, you know, and it, you know, in the end, a lot of things, much as I love the place, a lot of things weren't so great. And Memorial Plaza has never been great.
Even the nineteen sixty-seven plan or whatever, right? They wanna redevelop the west side of Memorial Plaza.
You know, the gazebo built for the vice president. The gazebo feels better than it's ever felt.
Yeah.
Because of the stair being on the other side and the little plaza connecting ultimately to this walkway, which, brief aside, go look. He's putting embedded heating elements in the walkway from Memorial Plaza all the way to Cooley Street, embedded heating elements.
Heating elements?
Yes, to melt ice. Ice.
To melt the ice, yeah.
To melt ice. So instead of, I mean, it's it's just, I mean.
Very progressive.
It's it's, that piece of it is spectacular, so, all right, um.
Yeah.
All right, so do you think we should schedule like a completely separate work session just about these issues?
Well, should should we do it? We're gonna have to make a determination at some point, right? Should we just do s- schedule uh like a public meeting or something around that time?
Yeah, it would be good to have a roadmap, you know, maybe to think about like individually, what kinds of things do we need to think of? I mean, I feel like we have a little bit of a sense of that from this conversation. And, yeah, what what are the pieces that we need to put in place in order to arrive at the meeting when we can?
Right.
And make the decision.
And and, you know, one question to which there are multiple answers is, is do we convene another meeting at the high school, so the two hundred and some people who came can come again?
I mean, I think, I I I would be open to that, but I think when we have a more tailored list.
No doubt, no doubt.
Kind of nine ideas, but we're down to, these are the three that are really.
Right, right, so.
Did you wanna meet? Did you wanna meet on an off meeting night?
Well, that's what I'm wondering, I, I, I mean, it, as you can see, as we have already done. It can suck up a lot of, a lot of time.
June fifth and June nineteenth coming up as, um.
So I'm out of town on June twelfth, FYI. So I'm not here at our next meeting.
Um, June nineteenth is not great for me, but.
Those are a holiday.
Yeah. It's Juneteenth.
Yeah.
Well, right, yeah, we can't.
Um, June fifth, I could do, I don't know about you guys.
I could, I could.
Yeah, I could.
Okay.
Do you wanna do it earlier, six, seven, what do you want?
What are we talking about?
June, about, about these issues, the development of the auditorium.
Here or?
No, it's probably, that'd be a public meeting.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Would just be a, a work session.
That's fine.
So.
Seven, six? Eight?
Seven, uh, not six. Seven.
Seven, okay.
Yeah. I was able to cook dinner and get here only through this late, so.
All right, you want seven fifteen?
Uh.
I mean, we can do whatever we want.
Seven.
Seven's good.
All right. So Eric, let's get that on the calendar for seven, uh, all right, so, uh, motion going to executive session. On matters of personnel, real estate.
I said.
Whatever else. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
I, motion approved, welcome to executive session.